All right, Mr. McNeely, this is Chair Aunt Taveras. It is four o'clock, so would you please start the study session?
Sure, thank you, Chair Aunt Taveras. Welcome Commissioners and staff and members of the public to the study session for today, August 28th. And first item on your agenda, Chair, is study session items, orientation to them that are scheduled for public hearing next month. Actually, Bob Short from our staff will be giving the first three. So Bob, if you want to go ahead and orient the commission to those first three cases, items one, two, and thirty. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McNeely. Thank you, Madam Chair. This case is the Crown Castle Stealth Tower Renewal CP2430. And in this case, the owner of the property is Lake Mary Investment LLC. The applicant is Crown Castle Chandler, Arizona. The representative is Todd Dowst of Phoenix. And the address of the property is on Lake Mary Road at 480 Lake Mary Road. The zoning is general and the site size is a fifty by fifty feet foot portion of a forty-two acre parcel. And as some background on the request, the renewal, the request is for renewal of a conditional use permit for a one hundred and forty-nine foot wireless telecommunications facility. In this case, it's a monopine. This monopine, this facility was originally approved in 2009, and this is the third renewal. And just as a reminder to the commission and for those commissioners that are new, a CUP can be administratively renewed if the application is submitted before they expire. And this CUP expired in May 29, 2024, and it can't be administratively renewed, which means it must come back to you for a new renewal. Technically, it is a new CUP at this point. It's a vicinity map showing the subject property. You can see the end of Lower Lake Mary right here. You see Lake Mary Road coming through, and you're probably familiar with the manufactured home park RV type park, more manufactured home, right in this area of the parcel as well. And this little portion right here of the parcels where the tower is located. And this is an aerial photo showing the towers. This is a recent aerial photo. And this is the site plan showing the location of the tower. And that's about it at this point. We'll have more next month for you, but with that, I'll take any questions from the commission.
Mr. Short, this is Chair Aunt Taveras. I'm not seeing any. So if you would please go to case number two.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This case is the Doni RV Park. That's CUP 2431. And this is their renewal as well. In this case, the applicant is Jay Douglas of Flagstaff. The property is located at eight eighty twenty-five State Route eighty-nine in Doni Park. And the zoning CG ten thousand. The parcel size is two point seven six acres. And the request is for a conditional use permit for renewal of the fifteen space RV park. And just as another reminder to the commission, RV parks are permitted by right in commercial zones unless they abut residential zoning, and this one does. So if they abut residential because of the possible impacts, they require a conditional use permit. This CUP is originally approved in 2019, and it also expired in April, so it is not eligible for administrative renewal. That's why it's coming back to you. So vicinity map showing the subject property. This is eighty-nine going into Doni Park, and this is Burris Lane right here, the context. And this is an aerial photo showing the subject property with the RV park. And this is the original site plan for the RV park back in 2019. And with that, I'll take any questions from the commission. This is their sign. Actually, you've probably seen their sign if you've driven up to Doni Park.
All right, Mr. Short, this is Chair Aunt Taveras again. Not seeing any questions, so go ahead and move to number three, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the Walnut Creek Meadows subdivision amended final flat. That's S U B twenty-four thirty-nine. And in this case, there are two property owners, property owner. First one is Two Man LLC of Flagstaff. And then the other one is Ernie Gillespie of Flagstaff, Arizona. The applicant is Ian Braun of Civil Design and Engineering, also known as CDNE of Flagstaff. The zoning is AR two and a half. And the proposed tract size is fifteen point six five acres. This is a vicinity map showing the subject parcels. This entire area here, including the AR five zone, is the Walnut Creek Meadows subdivision. So this pertains to a portion of that subdivision right in here. And this is an aerial photo. Again, this is the access. This is a developed access now with the paved road coming through. These are two lots, and this is a parcel outside, currently outside the subdivision, a ten acre parcel, and actually it's in the AR two and a half zone. This request is a subdivision amended final flat, and that's required when you propose to expand the subdivision. And in this case, they want to expand it by adding that parcel and combining that parcel with lots forty-seven and fifty to create a tract A. And so tracts are used differently, typically differently than residential lots. Typically, if it has a lot number like forty-seven and fifty before this, then it can be used for residential uses for building houses. A track would be a different type of use, like open space, like drainage. In this case, it's dedicated for community center, recreational facilities, and other outdoor uses. That's stamped right on this amended final flat as the uses for this tract. Walnut Creek Meadows subdivision was originally approved. The planning plat was approved in 2021, and the final plat was approved in 2023. The applicant would like to create this track to create some amenities for the subdivision residents. So that'd be solely for the use of subdivision residents and for their guests. And the commission will be seeing this development later because it's requiring to go through the design review process. So the commission will see this as a DRO when it develops. And this is the amended final plat itself, so it shows that these three parcels will be put together, and the new track will be tract A. And with that, I'll take any questions from the commission.
Okay, Mr. Short, this is Chair Aunt Taveras. I'm not seeing any hands raised. So, Mr. McNeely, if we could please go to case number four.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Case number four, ZC twenty-four zero four, is the zone change request from several different zoning districts to OS Open Space that was requested by the Parks and Rec Commission to the Planning Commission. The Planning and Zoning Commission, if you remember, initiated that zone change as you have the authority to do. So this is the study session for that zone change. And Jessica, Jessica Simmons, our Wildlife Planner, who is shared between our department and the Parks and Rec Department, will be presenting this case. So go ahead, Jessica.
Thank you, Mr. McNeely. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I am presenting again on the rezoning to open space. This is a rezone on county-owned parcels that are operated now for low-impact public recreation. And there's been a request to rezone these to open space based on that use and to protect their wildlife, scenic, ecological, and recreational values into the future. So to reorient where these parcels are, here's Kachina Village. And in the Kachina Village area, it's this little parcel here, this narrow one here, the big one here, which is the Wet Meadow at Pump House Wash, and this arrow-shaped one. These three here that are at the drainage where the culvert is underneath the road, these two on either side of Ancient Trail, and this one at Herrenberg Wash. The rest are located at Rogers Lake. It's the big one. That's the main part of the county natural area. And this eighty-acre one here, which is the community forest. There's been an update since last time. Parks and Rec has actually decided to remove all three of these frontieri parcels from the list to be rezoned. And that would mean that they would retain their current zoning, which is general zone. And I'm going to talk a little bit about these parcels. Here's a zoom in on them. And the shaded, this shaded greenish area represents a conservation easement that is on all three of these parcels. And the restrictions under this conservation easement are in general more restrictive than open space zoning. And it allows for low-impact, non-motorized recreation and hiking trails and education and wildlife viewing. And this orange area here is the building envelope. And the conservation easement has delineated this area probably to coincide with the three buildings that are there presently. You can see them here outlined in blue. They are currently in the process of being demolished, so they are going away. But the conservation easement doesn't allow for the construction of a single-family residence within this building envelope. And as you can see, the building envelope overlaps with all three parcels. So Parks and Rec has decided that they want to keep all three parcels in the general zoning because open space zoning does not allow for the construction of a single-family residence or caretaker's residence. Whereas the building envelope under the conservation easement does allow for the construction of one single-family residence. So Parks and Rec decided that they just want to keep the door open for possibly constructing a caretaker's residence out there someday, just to keep things as flexible as they can, while keeping in mind that this conservation easement would still continue to apply to all three of these parcels at frontieri in perpetuity. And outside the building envelope, sorry, I know I'm switching around here, but I feel like this map is useful to look at. Outside of this building envelope, pretty much the only things that would be allowed to be constructed are non-motorized trails, fencing, and signage. So it is pretty restrictive, and even though these would remain under general zone, the goals of open space zoning in general would still be in place at these parcels. But Parks and Rec just decided that they wanted it to be more flexible. So in summary, the Planning and Zoning Commission is being requested to initiate a zone change on these remaining twelve parcels to open space. And are there any questions?
Ms. Simmons, this is Chair Aunt Taveras. I am not seeing any questions for you either. So, Mr. McNeely, if you would please advance to Community Development Department update.
Will do, Madam Chair. Are you seeing the agenda again now?
Yes, yes, we are.
Okay, so the next three items, or the next two items, rather, are our long-range planning activities. First one regarding the Flagstaff Regional Plan. I know we had intended to have Sarah Decter from the city, the city's long-range planner, with us this evening to give you an update on the regional plan. I know Melissa Shaw sent you a memo regarding that update. That is actually going to take place next month. But Melissa is here with us. So Melissa, is there anything else that you wanted to update the Planning and Zoning Commissioners on regarding the Flagstaff Regional Plan? And we can see if any of the Commissioners have any questions on the Flagstaff Regional Plan.
Yes, thank you very much. Good evening, Commissioners. As Jess mentioned, Sarah was not available tonight, so she does plan to be with us next month for your September study session, specifically to talk about the sixty-day public review process, which will begin in October. So it will be October through November of this coming fall. And then just another update, the committee, the Regional Plan Committee, is meeting tomorrow evening, and then they'll meet one additional time in September to review the format for the regional plan and then review the entire content, all in one document. So those meetings are upcoming, and as usual, they've been, they're available both in person at the city public works yard and online. So more to come on that, but during the sixty-day public review, and you'll hear more on this next week, there'll be many, many opportunities for review and engagement during that phase of the regional plan. And I'll be happy to answer any questions on that.
Ms. Shaw, I'm not seeing any. So if you want to go ahead and go to the comp plan.
Okay. Thank you, Chair Taveras. So then, as you all know, we are simultaneously working on updating the county's comprehensive plan. And we do plan on joining at the county fair, the county's Public Affairs Table. So we'll be there with assistance from city staff because many of our planning staff will be out this weekend. But we'll be there with some informational flyers and then an opportunity for people to look at our draft values and visions and needs and issues and at least give us a bit more feedback on those at that table. So that will be there during all four days of the fair. And then just an update on the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Group. They met again. Their second meeting was on August fifteenth, and I just actually staffed that meeting for us. And Jess, did you want to tell the Commissioners what they covered? And then we can go on to the next meeting that's scheduled and what they'll be doing then.
Sure. Yeah, with the Comp Plan Advisory Group, the CPAG, which we do have two Commissioners on. They're meeting, what was it? That was just within the past four weeks, August fifteenth. Yep. We covered the scoping for the Comprehensive Plan Update, so we discussed the product, the scoping statement that came out of a scoping workshop. Actually, it was a two-part scoping workshop that we did with various community members, particularly community members who had been involved in previous comprehensive plans to set the scope for this update process. So we took some questions and just got the advisory group oriented to that scoping statement so they can understand what the established scope for the update is. And then we took the advisory group through really the entire community engagement process that we've been through up until now in what we considered Phase One of the update process, where we went out to the community in one-on-one contacts at the county fair or other community gatherings. We held a large series of focus groups and then culminated all that input with a county-wide statistically valid survey. And all of that input was to confirm a county's vision for the future, the county's community values, and then what we see is the needs and issues and recommend solutions in going forward and additional ways to outreach to the community. So that was kind of the breakdown of categories of input that we received. So we were able to show the advisory group even charts and graphs that showed what's important to the community. And I know we've done, we've done study sessions with you all as the Planning and Zoning Commission on this same information. So it really got the advisory group oriented to our input that helped establish the foundation for this plan update so they can understand as they move forward, reviewing chapters, what or sections of the Comprehensive Plan Updates, what the basis of those updates are. So any questions on what the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Group reviewed at their last meeting on August fifteenth?
Mr. McNeely, I'm not seeing any hands raised, so go ahead and continue.
Sure. And then they're meeting next month, which would be really key to understand. That will be on, let's see, September twenty-sixth. Right. Normally, it's the third Thursday of the month, but staff will be at the Arizona APA Conference and due to some of the third Thursday of the month. So it's the fourth Thursday of the month. And starting next month, they will be reviewing sections or chapters, so to speak. And Melissa, what are the two chapters they will be obtaining, will be reviewing at that meeting?
We are planning on taking the Water Resources Chapter and then the Sustainability, Resilience, and Energy Chapters to them in September.
Which is exciting because we are now in the process of having draft chapters and getting to this advisory group for their input. Anything else, Melissa, you want to cover on the Comprehensive Plan Update process?
I think that's it. If you're at the county fair, stop by the booth and take a look at what we've got there.
Tell your friends to stop by the booth, and it can be as quick as picking a flyer that'll have a QR code on it on how they can get on our emailing list and how they can get engaged in the process.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McNeely and Ms. Shaw. I think we're ready for Board of Supervisors update.
Okay, thanks, Madam Chair. So on Board of Supervisors update, last week on August twentieth, on Tuesday, the Board of Supervisors heard an appeal of the Planning and Zoning Commission denial of CUP twenty-four oh nine. That was a campground CUP in the Red Lake area. I'm sure you all remember that hearing. And the action of the Board of Supervisors was to uphold your denial and not to grant the appeal. So it was a long, it was a long hearing, had a lot of, had a lot of comment, had comment similar to what you all heard, your hearing from surrounding property owners, primarily residential neighbors. It had a lot of comment from, from community members in basically in support of the use. But in the end, the Board of Supervisors did uphold your denial. So any questions from the board regarding, regarding that hearing?
Not seeing any questions, Mr. McNeely. So that brings us to Commission and Staff Roundtable. So is there any staff or Commissioners that have thoughts, comments, questions?
If we're not hearing any from any Commissioners, I would, I would point out, I think it's a great roundtable topic that we feel like we've stepped up our field trips in recent months. And one of which in preparation for your, for your public hearing item this evening. And so I would point out to the, all the Commissioners that you can always attend a posting of a site with staff. When staff goes out to post a site, as a matter of fact, you can ride along with us in a county vehicle. We are very safe drivers. We were required to be and see the sites. And I think we've learned, hey, wow, it is worth P and Z Commission time and effort to get out and see some things. We had done a tour of three campgrounds recently, and really, I believe, gave the Commissioners a full understanding of what the various campgrounds look like and feel like once they're developed. You all see them on paper, on a site plan and a proposal, and to go out and see ones in operation was educational. So I just want to throw that out there and with that, let you know that when you see items going to hearing, then in the next month, if they interest you, if you feel like you would benefit from visiting the site, let us know, and we can make that happen. Only limit is if you have a forum, then we have to post the forum, and we can do that, too.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McNeely. Commissioner Ruggles, I see your hand raised. And Commissioner Ruggles, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Everything is working this time, so I would like to add a little bit to what Commissioner, or what Jess McNeely had to say. This is something I've been doing ever since I've been on the commission. That's been about twelve and a half years, maybe a little more now. And it is very worthwhile. I would like to encourage those who haven't been doing this or haven't done this to really give it a try. It is worthwhile. It has made a difference in how we have evaluated, made decisions on a number of cases in the past. And I am guessing it will go that way in the future also. The other thing gets kind of interesting during the winter sometimes, and I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. Commissioner Toki.
Good afternoon. The only thing I wanted to add regarding the Advisory Board is to maybe go ahead and change that date because right now I still have it for the nineteenth, and I don't have it for the twenty-sixth.
Thank you for letting us know that Commissioner Toki, and we can put that fixed. That was, yeah, at the discussion with the advisory group, we established that. So we need to formalize that and all of our information. The other thing that I would point out, the advisory group discussed, and we decided to move ahead with, is they would like to bump up their meeting time instead of from five-thirty to five. So we can, we as staff can certainly make sure that all the advisory group members have the correct information.
Okay. Well, this is Chair Aunt Taveras, and I do have to concur with Mr. McNeely and Commissioner Ruggles' comments on the site visits. They have really, really been informative, and I'm glad that I have gone on the last two field trips that were put together. So I appreciate staff doing that. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else in staff or commission with thoughts, comments? Hey, I'm not seeing anything, Mr. McNeely. This has been a very peaceful study session, for lack of a better way to describe it. So, well, hold on. Commissioner Best, I see your hand raised.
Yeah, Jess, could you stay on after so we could have a secret talk?
Yeah, absolutely. It is open to the public, but so as secret as that can possibly be.
Thank you.
Will do. Okay, Madam Chair.
Okay, I'm not, you know, going once, going twice, and I'm not seeing any other hands raised. So I'm going to mute. It is four twenty-eight, and we will start the hearing promptly at five-thirty.
Hey, everyone, back in an hour. Okay, so what can I do for you?
I'll call you. How about that?
Perfect. I'm going to go ahead and mute then.
Okay, call Jess McNeely.
Mr. McNeely, this is Chair Aunt Taveras. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, Chair Taveras, I hear you great. You hearing me okay?
Yes, I can. I would like to ask our Recording Secretary, Shar, if she could send Vice Chair Burton another link to this meeting. Vice Chair Burton has reached out to me, and she is unable to get in. So let's, let's try that first by sending a new link, and if that doesn't work, we'll figure something else out because we will not have a quorum without her. And if that doesn't work, we'll figure something else out, because we will not have a quorum without her.
Yep, I'm sending her an email right now with the link. Or out of our Outlook calendar, I think the Outlook calendar, we set it up in our Outlook calendars as staff, and I believe that link is, is often easier here than the one out of the agenda.
Okay. Have you, have you sent it yet, Mr. McNeely?
Yep, just sent it.
Okay. All right. I'll correspond with her and I'll let you know if we, if we need any further help.
All right.
Okay, Mr. McNeely, again, this is Chair Aunt Taveris, and she indicated that she was in or is getting in.
Okay.
So with that, I do believe that we have a quorum, barely, but we do have one.
Yes, yes. Yes, we knew that Commissioners Wilson and Williams had anticipated being absent for this evening.
Okay. Commissioner Walsh, I do see your hand raised.
Good evening. I have to get on this meeting by going to the county homepage and clicking into the departments and finding Planning and Zoning, and then clicking on the public meetings. That's the only way I can get in here, so that might be a, a way for her. Second of all, can I ask Jessie to make the shared screen larger? Thank you.
Okay, Mr. McNeely, do you see Vice Chair Burton in? She said that she is. You're in, okay. Okay, very well, then it is 5:30, and I'm going to call the meeting to order. I'm going to start by reading the meeting rules and procedures. So, welcome to the August 28th, 2024 meeting of the Coconino County Planning and Zoning Commission. Cases will be heard in the order they appear on the agenda. We only have one case this evening. Following the staff presentation, the applicant and/or the applicant's representative may address the commission. As an applicant, if you agree with the staff report and have no additional information, please feel free to keep your comments brief. Any relevant comments are welcome. Following the applicant's presentation, I will make a call to the public. If you wish to address this case, please state your name and address. We ask that your comments be limited to three minutes or less. Comments must be relevant to the case. Please address all comments to the commission. No matter how strongly you may feel about the case, all comments must be polite and courteous. After all interested public have spoken, the public comment portion will be closed. Discussion will then take place amongst commissioners. Decisions of this commission regarding any zone change or preliminary subdivision plat approval are referred to the Board of Supervisors as recommendation. All other case decisions are binding unless appealed to the Board of Supervisors. If you disagree with the commission's decision, you have 15 days to appeal. Please contact staff at the Community Development Office for appeal procedures. Due to the virtual nature of this meeting, I will be doing a roll call vote of the commissioners to ensure accuracy for the record. Please mute your speakers and turn off your camera. Also, please do not use the comment function for discussion. It is strictly for communicating with staff if you're having a tech issue. With that, thank you for joining us this evening and actively participating in our county planning. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone would please stand. Mr. McNeely, would you please lead us?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McNeely. The second item on the agenda is the approval of the July 31st, 2024 minutes. If there are no corrections, I will accept a motion and a second for approval, please.
I'll move that we approve the minutes from July 31st, 2024.
I will second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Vice Chair Burton, a second by Commissioner Ruggles to approve the July 31st, 2024 minutes as written. All in favor, please say aye. Vice Chair Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Tohe?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh?
Aye.
This is Chair Aunt Taveris, and I also vote aye. The first item and only item on the public hearing agenda this evening is case number CUP 24019. If staff would please present.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bob, short form staff, I've already got your screen shared, Bob. So Bob, if you could go ahead and present, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McNeely. Can everyone hear me?
Hear you great.
All right, thanks. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. This case is the Forged Ethic Wind Farm. That's CUP 2419.
Hey, Bob, you, you're muted again, so if you were just speaking, I think you must have accidentally muted yourself. There you go.
Yeah, must have. Thanks. Appreciate that. Okay, in this case, the property owners are Babett Ranches LLC of Flagstaff, Arizona, and the Arizona Department of State Lands out of Phoenix. The applicant is Morgan Brighter of RWE Clean Energy LLC of Austin, Texas. The representative is Jill Gramps of SWICA Flagstaff, Flagstaff, Arizona. The zoning is general and also state trust land is not zoned. And the location of the site is about 25 miles north of Flagstaff on the CO Bar Ranch. That's part of Babett Ranches. The project site includes parts of four different parcels, totaling 30,001 and 35 acres on private and state trust land. In this case, the request is for a conditional use permit for the development of a 324-megawatt renewable energy project. That's a, that's a utility facility according to our zoning ordinance. And that would include up to 100 wind turbines, a permanent met tower, an ADLS, that's an aircraft detection lighting system, and many supporting facilities. This is a vicinity map showing the subject property. As you can see, it's about 25 miles north of Flagstaff between Highway 180 and Highway 89. And this is a site plan. And with this, you can show, you can see the general layout of the wind turbines. Like I said, about 100 of them, so they're in, in this general area here. And this is a little bit of background on this case and other renewable energy cases in, in Coconino County. This is the fifth utility scale renewable energy project to be developed in Coconino County. And it's the third to be developed on CO Bar Ranch, which again is part of Babett Ranches. The two previous projects on CO Bar Ranch were the, we call it the BREC, the Babett Ranch Energy Center Wind Farm. That's 50 turbines that just began operating back in about May. And the other one is the Solar Key Solar Farm that includes about 12,000 acres of solar panels, and that has not yet begun construction. So this is a, a map of the county that shows the renewable energy projects that have been or, or under development in the county. The first one is Perrin Ranch back in about 2010 or 12, I believe. And we had Chevlon Butte, that is currently operating, that's 164 wind turbines. A few of those are over in Navajo County. And then we had the big BREC project also currently operating. And then the CO Bar Solar and the Forged Ethic, which is, which is the one that we are talking about tonight, the commission's hearing tonight. This is a map showing the, the renewable energy projects on the CO Bar Ranch. Again, you can see the turbines from the BREC project, the Solar Key project, and this is Forged Ethic at this point. So there are a few in this area. This goes all the way, if you look at this map, it goes all the way from Valley to 89. This is 180 to 89. So this is kind of a large area here known as Babett Ranches. For those of you that know, there's quite a bit of space actually in here. This is SP Crater. You can kind of see the, the real distinctive crater there. And there, there is an eagle habitat conservation area around this, so they don't expect to develop anymore here. This gets into the actual valley area and into South Rim Ranches, which is a very large parcel development. And based on that, I wanted to discuss cumulative impacts. I know some commissioners have been concerned about this, that it's quite a bit of development in one place. And that's covered in our Comp Plan Guiding Principles that talks about cumulative effects of human use. And how if you, if you look at one case, you'll see one thing, but as you look at many other cases, things change a lot along the way, and that can be a cumulative impact. Especially when I look at the zoning ordinance definition of cumulative impacts. This is, this is related specifically to the REO, what we call the REO, or the Renewable Energy Ordinance. And in this case, it, what it says in our zoning ordinance is that cumulative impacts shall mean the total effects from an existing or foreseeable future utility scale renewable energy projects on the fragmentation of wildlife link, wildlife linkages or habitat or visual resources. Foreseeable future are projects that are approved, approved but not constructed, pending applications and pre-application requests. So in this case, what I wanted to point out is staff doesn't expect to see anymore, and we go back to that map again. We don't expect to see any more renewable energy projects in this particular area. At this point, we expect that they will, in fact, we have had discussions with energy development companies, and we expect that they will move to the west side of Valley and pretty far from Valley. We're looking at, we've talked to some energy development companies about solar and also about wind farms in that area, which would be pretty far from here. So I just wanted to bring that up. The applicant is also going to talk about this as well, especially as it relates to visual resources. Okay, so this will be the first project that is subject to this section 3.19, Utility Scale Renewable Energy Systems. And we call that the REO, the Renewable Energy Ordinance for short, a little bit easier to say. And I wanted to apply to the commission that the REO contains standards for how renewable energy projects will be developed and operate. So this means that we'll have fewer conditions in these cases moving forward, because it's all laid out in that Renewable Energy Ordinance. We don't have to worry about a lot of conditions. I think there are only five or six in this particular case. The applicant, the Renewable Energy Ordinance does provide for waivers, and the applicant is requesting one waiver, and that is to shadow flicker. What the ordinance says is that shadow flicker on a property on a residence shouldn't be more than 30 hours per year. And in this case, there, there, there is Navajo Trust Land adjacent. No, there are no residences there, and that's where they're requesting that the shadow flicker be allowed to go on longer than that. Now, shadow flicker is basically when it's, it's, it's seasonal, and it's also based on the time of day. As you can imagine, when the sun starts to go down, then it tends to create a flicker, a shadow, as the wind turbines, as the turbines turn, as they go around. And that, that creates a flicker on the land, so that's what shadow flicker is. These are the project components, up to 100 wind turbines and one permanent meteorological tower. That's a met tower. And I also should point out that the applicant has talked about possibly as few as 72 wind turbines. It depends on the type of turbine that they get and how much, how much power they produce. Two permanent radar activated aircraft detection lighting systems. And then these are lighting systems, these are towers that detect when an aircraft is, is in the vicinity, and it would turn on the lights only at that time, so that the lights on the towers aren't on all the time. And for a little background on that, the FAA, the Federal Aviation Administration, what they, what they require is that any tower over 200 feet in height requires lighting on top. So all of these meet that definition. Okay, so there, there are also up to six temporary power performance test locations. And this basically includes a met tower. These are temporary met towers at each of these locations, six months before and 18 months after construction of the turbines. So what they do is they put up one of these met towers at the same height as the, what they, what you call the hub height, which is the height right in the middle of the rotors. So they're, they, they put those up, they erect those to test the wind in that location. They take them down and they erect the wind turbine. And then they put the, these temporary met towers up for 18 additional months just to check the wind, and then they take them down permanently. So I do have to mention that the temporary met towers, as I said, will be 384 feet high at the hub or something like that, dependent on the type of turbines that they use in this case. And they are not designed to be connected to an ADLS system. Some other project components, underground electrical collection lines and co-located underground fiber optic cables connecting turbines within the permit area. Access roads, a collection station and an operations and maintenance building, also known as an O and M building. Approximately five mile long above ground gentile line connecting the project collection station to an existing APS switchyard. So the, the gentile lines, that, that is the very large electrical lines that take all the power from the project and, and put it on the main line. And upgrade, of course, to the existing APS switchyard to handle all of the power. And one project infrastructure equipment laydown yard, three staging areas and one batch plant. And these are all temporary, so these are just while the wind farm is being constructed. This is the proposed wind turbine model. This is the main one that the applicant would like to use, because as you can see, it, the, it's rated at 4.5 megawatts of power. So that's a, that's a really high rating for power, puts out a lot of power. And as you look along here, you can see this is the hub height for that tower. That's right in the middle of the rotor. 640 feet would be the tip height. That's when the rotor is straight up. So that's as tall as the tower would be. And then this is the rotor diameter, 535 feet. So this is the main one that they're looking at. It's the best, the 163. And this shows you some examples of that, so you can see the, this is the, this is the rotor diameter. And this is the hub height right here from the ground to the middle of the rotor. And these are some of the other models, some different And these are some of the other models, some different models that they might use, it depends on what's available and what they determine to use. And as you can see, the top one here is also rated at four point five megawatts, all these are, are quite a bit smaller than that. Want to look at wildlife management here for, for a minute, so the applicant has been coordinated with the US Fish and Wildlife Service and also with the Arizona Department of Game and Fish, and that's since twenty twenty. So the Rio requires that applicants follow federal and state guidelines for wind energy. Those must be consulted and design recommendations from these are incorporated into the project. And those that would be approved by, again, the federal wildlife people, the AGFD and our wildlife planner, and our wildlife planner is here if you have questions for her. And those are the, these are the two guidelines from each of those different entities that they have to look at, and this is right out of the Rio, so that is something that they have to look at. There are also other applicable statutes, policies, regulations cited in the report. If you looked at the report, there's a lot of information in there. So they did look at several different things, that includes Endangered Species Act, the migratory bird treaty act, the bald and golden eagle protection act, the birds of conservation concern. And then Arizona has its own species of greatest conservation need list, so they looked at that as well. And the Arizona native plant law. So this is the federal listed species, these are basically species where their range might potentially cross into this project area. And pretty much none of these are expected to be present in that area. The monarch butterfly maybe, but they're not quite officially listed yet. And I don't know about you, I've not seen monarch butterflies recently sadly, but there aren't many around. The California condor has not been observed closer than ten miles north of the project site, they're, they tend to be up toward the Grand Canyon. Mexican gray wolf, they can move around a lot, but there aren't that many that have been observed in this area, and they're not expected to, you know, wander into the site. This, this particular cactus has been documented ten miles from the site. But the soils on this site aren't really suitable for it. And for the last three here, there just isn't any suitable habitat for like, for example, a Mexican spotted owl, which is more in forest. Or these other two as well. So they have determined, the report did determine that twenty-seven species designated as species of greatest conservation need, that's short for, I mean, SG CN. And have or may occur on the site, and thirteen of these species are known to occur on the site, and that includes the bald eagle, the golden eagle, the pinion jay, several things you might recognize there, like the prairie dogs. And in different kinds of bats, and of course, the pronghorn antelope. Want to talk a little about bats and eagles. In twenty twenty-one, there was a bat colony documented within ten miles of the analysis area. Analysis area is the site plus with a two mile buffer around it, so there, there, there has been a bat colony discovered near here. And according to the report, they expect that twenty species of bats and representing four species group would occur in this analysis area. They also determined that no federalist bat species would occur in the area, but there are six species from that species of greatest concern and need, that's that state of Arizona list that would occur in this area. This area is the, is the project area is year round range for both the golden eagle and also the wintering range for the ball, for bald eagles. And there, there has been a golden eagle nest identified in the project area. And there's a two mile buffer established around this nest, and I'll show you that next. So if you look at the, you know, the site plan, this, this is the two mile buffer around the golden eagle nest. So there aren't any turbines developed in this area because of that golden eagle in that location. In terms of wildlife movement corridors, the project area does contain wildlife connectivity zones. That's for elk, deer, pronghorn and other animals. And I wanted to mention that in terms of wind turbines, the only footprint you have is the bottom of the turbine. So there's not a lot of things that block these wildlife connectivity zones. That occurs more with, with solar projects and not so much with wind farms. And this is a map, and it shows, you know, all of these different connectivity animals for a variety of different kinds of of animals, and you can see they're, they're going from one location to, to another. And that's what all these zones are. The applicant has provided a wildlife protection plan, and that would be designed to protect the project through construction, operation and decommissioning phases of the project. And these are some of the things that they, they would have in that, they have in that plan. With the project components will avoid active eagle, eagle nest in and within two miles of the project site, like I just showed you, there's that buffer around an eagle nest. The four point five mile electrical gentile line, that's the larger line, would be built adjacent to that existing transmission line. All electrical lines for wind turbines will be installed underground. Above ground power lines will comply with best practices for protecting wildlife. The project has been designed to minimize disturbance of wildlife habitat by using existing roads and other disturbed area as much as practical without building new roads were not necessary. Project design maintains open space for wildlife, and then the distance between turbines and other infrastructure. And that ranges from about point three to about half a mile. And this, this allows for the passage of wildlife like pronghorn, mule deer and would not connect, would not interfere as much with those connectivity zones. Permanent fences would be erected, would be erected only around essential infrastructure, as far as I know, that's mostly just the operation and maintenance building. The applicant did conduct a quite extensive cultural resources analysis, this is a class three pedestrian survey, which means that people get out and actually walk along the, the ground to look for cultural resource sites. They did document three hundred and fifty-four cultural resources. That includes eighteen archaeological sites and three hundred and thirty-five incidental occurrences along with one in use historic transmission line. This site was designed or was redesigned to avoid all National Register of Historic Places and Arizona Register of Historic Places eligible sites. So the layout of the turbines did take that into account. And when, when the project layout is finalized, WICA will prepare a cultural resources avoidance and discovery plan assessing the effects of the project on those sites, those eligible sites. And, and then avoidance monitoring and unanticipated discovery plan, so they're doing quite a bit to protect these cultural resource sites. I want to go into the visual analysis, and I wanted to mention that the applicant is also going to talk about this later on. These are the, what we call key observation points, these are the key observation points map, so you can see the different locations where they did do complete photo simulations. The property does contain three scenic resources as defined in the Rio. One of those is Highway one eighty, where the closest turbine is four point seven miles from the highway. There is also the Arizona National Scenic Trail, where the closest turbine is point four miles from the trail, and then there's also SP crater. That I pointed out a few minutes ago, the closest turbine is six miles from the crater. So this is, this first photo scan is from the Arizona National Scenic Trail. And this is what it would look like, this is point four miles from the trail, so obviously turbines are quite visible from the trail in this location. This is another view from the National Scenic Trail. This is a point eight miles, so as you can see, they're also visible, but not quite as visible as the last one. There is, by the way, a quarter mile setback in a half mile corridor where the trail goes through the site. This is on Highway eighty-nine, it's actually not eighty-nine, eight. And this would be up toward the Gray Mountain area, and it's pretty far from the site, but it's there, they are still visible. And let's go back and do that again. So if you look back against the you, right here, you can see them show up in that area, so you can see them along here. So this is thirteen point four miles from the site. So it's pretty far away, but they are still visible. To a, to some extent, you probably wouldn't notice them unless you look directly in that location and then you'd probably see them. This is probably the most, this is probably the largest, I'll call it visual impact of the entire site. Partly because it's right next to the B rec site, so you're going to see both at the same time. And the applicant is going to show some better visual simulations of this, but at this point, this is how it would look now. And this is how it would look with the turbines, you can see them all along here, so this is a pretty, you know, it's pretty visible here, and what I'm saying is this is the most visible from a highway. Especially how we one eighty, so this is probably the most important site for visual impacts. This is from SP crater. Six miles from the site, you can see them showing up out there. And this is from Red Butte, which is along Highway sixty-four, a little distance north of Valley. So you can see them show up on the horizon back in this location. And this is from a residence on Grandview Road, looking southeast. As you can see, this, this KB line goes through here in this area. And there, that's how you'd see the turbines. Okay, in terms of citizen participation, twenty-four property owners within ten miles of the subject property were notified of the application and invited to a meeting in Flagstaff on May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. So it has been a while, we've been working on this site for quite a while. And this is a pretty remote site, so there aren't a lot of parcels very close to here. Even within ten miles, we only had twenty-four property owners. The applicant also advertised the meeting on, in the newspaper and on Facebook. And this was like an informal meeting, kind of an open house style meeting where, you know, people could wander in and, and take a look at it and talk to, talk to people associated with the site and get their questions answered. These are some of the comments and questions that were documented, and note that these primarily come from public agencies because there weren't a lot of people that live around here. A lot of citizens. So there were a variety of questions from travel groups about wildlife and cultural resources. The Grand Canyon National Park asked for information about lighting and the applicant responded with information about the ADLS system. The Forest Service that controls the Arizona Trail, they actually requested a one mile corridor or half mile setbacks around the Arizona Trail, the applicant indicated that a quarter mile setback from the turbines would be provided. And that's consistent with what's required in the Rio. So it is kind of a difficult issue, but you know, it can be quite constraining on, on a site like this one, you have a lot of different entities that would like different things. AGFD made several recommendations provided in the citizen participation report. And that's, there's a big list of things that they talked about in the report along with the applicant's response to those things. And these are some changes to conditions, after I talked to the applicant, they did have some requests. And one of them is just kind of the lapse of my part is that this should be six forty rather than six fourteen up here, and that, that's the tip of the blade when it's in vertical position, that would be the height. And note as well that I put in here, or a height approved by the community development director and the wildlife planner. If it can be determined, increased height will not create significant visual or wildlife impacts. It's sometimes very difficult to predict what might happen in the future. There may be a turbine that comes out that the applicant wasn't aware of, that may be a little bit taller. So that's why we leave that in there, just to make sure that they're not constrained by, by something like that. They also added a lot to condition five here. Basically pointing out that there's only one, there's one permanent met tower, but there's six temporary met towers. And that the hub height would be three hundred and eighty-four feet. And the applicant also asked that I include that same language that I included up on condition four in here. And the only other thing was a little typo down here on, on number six where I left the E out, so I added that as well. These are the findings of fact for conditional use permit. Those have been addressed in your staff report, and if you've noticed, the applicant also addressed those quite thoroughly in their, in their narrative in their report. So we can talk about those if the commission has any questions about that. And with that, staff recommends approval of CP twenty-four nineteen with the recommended conditions. And with that, I'll take any questions from the commission.
Mr. Short, this is Chair Aunt Taveris. I am not seeing any commissioner's hands raised at this time. I do have one small one, I just want to be sure that I understand this, on the temporary met towers that are going to be limited to six, correct?
Oh, no, that is correct.
Okay, and so those will go up six months prior to turbine construction and will remain eighteen months after turbine construction.
Yes, that is correct, so what they do is they actually, like I said before, they take them down, they put them in exactly the same spot as they put a turbine. Then they, so they test the wind, then they take them down, they erect the turbine, and then they put them back up nearby to continue to test the wind for another eighteen months, and then they're taken down permanently, they won't, won't be erected again.
Okay, okay, so the six months prior, the eighteen months afterwards is a total of twenty-four months, a total of two years. Will those temporary towers have the blinking red lights on them?
They, they, they will be required to have a lighting on theirs consistent with what the FAA requires. And unfortunately, these, these towers are not, they're not designed to have the ADLS system, and I can let the applicant describe that a little bit more. But it's, it's difficult because of fiber optics that have to be in the tower that has the ADLS system, so no, they would not have the ADLS system installed in them.
Okay, and I didn't think that they would, but I just, as I'm, as I'm forming my opinion, my decision here, I just want to be sure. Okay. And I didn't think that they would, but I just, as I'm, as I'm forming my opinion, my decision here, I just want to be sure. So really for a period of two years, there would be six towers with lighting on them of some sort. And I, and the applicant, um, I know the applicant is with us. And um, I would just like the applicant at their presentation to address that issue, please. Um, that's all I've got. Mr. Short, Commissioner Best has a question. Go ahead, Commissioner Best.
Uh, thank you, ma'am chair. Um, I've got a question uh, that comes from the tour that we took a couple of weeks ago. Um, as we drove out one eighty and then we turned right on the road along the uh, transmission line. It's a new road. It, my understanding is it may be the access for forged ethic, or they may go in a different way. Um, but as we were driving on that road, uh, we noticed that it had been bladed at least sixty feet wide. And twenty feet on each side, there was a Russian thistle, just completely covering the ground. And so that does not relate directly to this case, but it does relate to the county's uh, methods and powers of enforcement. So that's my question. Um, I don't have the conditions of the brick project in front of me, but we definitely had a weed program in there. And yet there were lots and lots and lots of weeds about to go to seed and create a lot of seed. Um, how are we enforcing the conditions and the plan? Uh, there, there are many conditions that are not in the staff report, but that are in the plan. So we didn't, I don't think we wanted to duplicate every condition. Um, and I think this, this applicant, uh, R S W gets the prize for the longest case I remember in nineteen years. It's over four hundred pages. So we're not going to list all those conditions, but they're in the plan. The question is, who is enforcing? Because apparently we are not enforcing, in my opinion, adequately what's going on with brick, or we would have, somebody would have caught the Russian thistle infestation and done, done something about it. Hopefully they will now, since uh, we reported it to them. Does the county have inspectors who go out? Are our inspectors, uh, among other things, qualified to find invasive plants? Uh, so that's my question.
Well, Commissioner Best, in this case, the uh, like I said, you don't require to have as many conditions because of the Rio. So the Rio in section three point one nine E performance standards. Uh, it has under two vegetative covered weeds and landscaping requirements. So that's where they would have to comply with that. They would, again, it would be a weed management plan would be required and also um, a revegetation plan. And I think part of the issue is that uh, when you submit a building permit, then they can go to work on the project. And then uh, at that point, they should complete all of these things. And then at the, you know, like in, in the case of the, of the B rec project, uh, they started operating in, in May or sometime in early May, I think. Uh, so they were approved to begin operation and then we get all the summer rains and all the weeds come up. So I think it, it is something that's difficult for staff to, you know, to, to stay up with. But we'll definitely, based on that um, experience, we'll definitely put out more, more effort at this point. Now, we don't have um, a lot of weed expertise on staff. Uh, one thing though, I think uh, um, Mr. McNally and I kind of agreed to is that, agreed on is that when there's a disturbed area alongside the road, uh, we can tell that it's not native plants coming up. So we could see that once, you know, once it was pointed out to us that uh, that disturbed area was, was growing up with weeds and not with uh, whatever revegetation process had occurred. Uh, and I think sometimes it just, uh, you know, uh, sometimes weeds can overcome whatever kind of rebedging that, that they do. So that is something, uh, you know, it's, it's, uh, it takes quite a bit of work, quite a bit of inspection to go out and look at those things.
And Bob, this is, this is Jess with staff and, and Commissioner Best of it helps us well. This is, you know, there's a lot of reporting requirements that are on the burden of the applicant. The applicant has people out in the area. They're, they're seeing the area. They, they know where they built the roads. They know where they have site disturbance. So a, a, a mixture in here is, is certainly um, reporting requirements. I know we get, we get pretty hefty into reporting requirements with wildlife. Um, I think reporting requirements on the applicant, um, demonstrating, yep, here's where we've disturbed. A year later, after, you know, after the next year's monsoons, you know, we did may, did some weed mitigation in the beginning, uh, probably requires some maintenance. So that's, that's where we would propose um, working with our partners and the applicants that um, if there's, that there's um, um, some accountability on their part, that they would be reporting back to our staff. They're, they are going to have regular reporting requirements as a part of the Rio. And uh, reporting back to us can help, can help that process, help them be looking at it as well, knowing they've got a report on it. So if that can help, uh, that's something that, that we're, that we're wanting to integrate into just the confirmation of meeting requirements.
Okay. Commissioner Best, this is Chair Aunt Taveras. Has you, do you feel that your question has been adequately answered?
No. Uh, and the reason is that um, I, I have read the entire existing plan and I think it's excellent. But I think it is up to us to make sure that it happens. In the case of weeds, um, if you let them go for a year and at every weed turns out thousands of seeds, uh, you're in a world of hurt that you may not physically be able to recover from. Um, and I just want to make sure, and we, we can hear from the applicant, and I think that's, you know, I don't, I don't want to beat us up over this. But I, I want to have confidence at the end of this process that um, that what we're saying is for real. Because driving out that road and see that, and seeing it unnecessarily bladed, it was dead flat. There was no reason that it needed to be bladed sixty feet wide. Uh, that's just contrary to the basic uh, ethic that we're trying to um, achieve here, which is to acquire renewable energy without damaging a land. It's a, it's a tough thing to do. And in this particular case, looking at the car window, we were not doing it. So um, I'll, I guess I'll wait to hear from the applicant. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Best. Um, Commissioner Walsh.
Um, thank you, Chair Aunt Taveras. Uh, my question is slightly related to the, the last discussion. Um, and I'm guess I'm curious about how these towers are erected that high? And am I to assume it's with um, helicopters? I just, I'm curious how they're going to put these in without massive disturbing of every site of every tower. I'm curious about that. Thank you.
Commissioner Walsh, um,
I'm sorry, Mr. Short.
Yeah, sorry. The applicant can definitely answer this better than I can, but uh, my understanding is they use cranes, so really large cranes to uh, to put them in place, not, not helicopters. So while they would run over this site a little bit, yeah, if, if, if they don't disturb it, break up the ground, it might not be as damaging as grading. But I, I can let the applicant answer that much better than I can.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Short. And again, this is Chair Aunt Taveras. I know the applicant is with us and hearing these questions. So if you would um, prepare an answer to the questions that are being asked, so you can do that or answer them in your presentation, I'd really appreciate it. All right. Um, Commissioner Tohe.
Uh, yes. Thank you and good evening again. Um, I know that there was information regarding outreach to um, the neighbors in the vicinity, including the indigenous nations. And I'm just curious to find out what it, what it is that they may have said, or, I mean, um, I, I, I think I'd like to know more about that because there's no, um, I guess that, uh, a thorough document about that. Um, what, what was received as far as confirmations, um, or disagreements, those kinds of things. And then the other thing is, I think with my colleagues here, I also am still concerned about the um, the, the wildlife relatives that we have out there. Um, I don't know how much, how much humming this creates. I don't know about windforet farms that way. Um, but will that cause um, impacts, uh, especially with the routes that the deer or the antelope, I can't remember which one um, that, that was mentioned in here that are in the area and their migration path. I'm, I'm still concerned about that. And uh, and the other thing is, um, I know with information from open spaces um, regarding native plants, um, once they're trampled or disturbed, it's, they're really hard to revive them in the same area. So those are some concerns that I have, but also want to have the applicant um, at least answer some of those. And um, just seeing, just talking about um, uh, the, the road being paved or not paved, um, being widened to sixty feet, I think also concerns me. I'm just like, if there, if there is um, information that was given to us that says that um, there weren't, there'll be no new roads or those kinds of things. I, I think that's um, also something I'd like to have some answers to. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Uh, this is Chair Aunt Taveras. Thank you, um, Commissioner Tohe. So um, I am going through and I'm looking to see if any other commissioners' hands are raised. Seeing none, I'm going to now ask the applicant, the applicant or the applicant's representative or both to um, address the commission. Please state your name and address for the record. And in your presentation, I know that you will include comments or answers to all of the questions that were presented. So with that, um, I would like to ask the applicant to go ahead and present now.
Thank you, commissioners. Um, I'm Morgan Schwann, uh, soon to be Morgan Brighter. Uh, bear with me as I just get this screen presentation up here. Just want to make sure that I have the right one. Can you see my screen?
Yes, we can. You, you do seem to be very, your, your voice is soft. Is there any way that perhaps you could move closer to a microphone so we could better hear you?
Uh, yes, is that, is this better?
Yes, that's much better. Thank you so much. Okay. Name an address for the record and then if you would go ahead and present, please.
Perfect. Okay. Um, legally, I'm still Morgan Schwann. Uh, I live at one, one, two, one, one half Henninger Street, unit one, Austin, Texas, seven, eight, seven, zero, two. Um, and I am the senior development manager on this project. I've been the lead since um, late twenty eighteen, early twenty nineteen, when this project just started. Uh, I recognize a couple, a couple of names, unfortunately not faces at the moment. Um, from our, our first C U P hearing for met towers back in twenty nineteen. So really excited to be here today to talk with you all, um, and really impressed with the work that the county planning and zoning team have put together, reviewing our application, um, synthesizing it and putting together conditions and recommendations. So just want to start off by saying thank you before uh, going into our presentation. Uh, so thank you, Bob and team. So before we dive into the project, just a little bit of background information on R W E. We've been active in North America since twenty, uh, two thousand and six, where what is called an independent power producer or owner operator. So that means that not only do we um, develop and originate these sites, we also continue to own and operate them throughout the life of the project. We have a very strong history in wind, owning and operating over three thousand turbines across about ten states and forty operational wind sites. Um, and then this project, the Forge Ethic project that we're going to be speaking about, is a really important part of R W E's goals to reach twenty five gigawatts of clean energy production by twenty thirty five. So just a, a brief overview, I know Bob has already nailed it and covered pretty much everything on the project. Um, but this project is about twenty nine thousand acres uh, for three hundred and twenty four megawatts. It sits on Babett Ranches and Arizona State Trust lands. We anticipate construction to go on for about eighteen months. Uh, could start as early as July of twenty twenty five. Um, and, but we're anticipating operations likely to start around April of twenty twenty seven. So just a, you know, some background on why we believe this project has some really strong community benefits. Um, one of those benefits are local, local jobs. We intend ahead of construction to host a local job fair with our construction contractor. Uh, that will have two hundred to three hundred temporary construction roles for that period of about eighteen months. Uh, then R W E will employ ten full-time operations and safety positions. Uh, personally, I, I used to work in our recruitment department um, several years ago. And we do prefer to hire local. We find that uh, local folks tend to stay on site longer uh, and tend to be more committed to the area. Um, then moving on to some tax benefits. This project we're anticipating should have about sixteen million dollars in local tax benefits. Uh, and then another one point seven million that would be uh, from county sales tax benefits that would be upfront. Whereas the sixteen million would be through the life of the project. Um, from a local funding and spend perspective, we are working with High Country Fire, actually just signed a agreement with them today. We're really excited about that. Um, I've really enjoyed working with Chief Trotter and we are going to be making a donation of over five hundred thousand dollars. Uh, what we also see with these projects is that during construction and operations, we see an increase uh, in spend at local lodging, restaurants, uh, spend on supplies and vehicle maintenance and fuel. And then of course, um, one of the other long-term benefits is to the landowners. So Babett Ranches will be able to continue uh, traditional ranching and land use. Uh, so ranching and conservation, um, recreations of hunting and hiking. And the ASLD uh, will receive payments as well that go towards funding public schools. Uh, we also see improved ranch roads on site. And I will definitely speak to roads and weed management here in a little bit to address Commissioner Best's uh, questions. So you know, one of the questions that we get frequently is just about citing projects and making sure that we cite them responsibly. So there's three main things that uh, developers typically look at uh, when citing a project. And that is the, the wind resource. Um, making sure that counties have guidelines on how to develop responsibly and how to be good neighbors. And um, the needs from the local utilities and the existing transmission infrastructure. So I just want to start on the wind resource out here. Um, I have a map. You can see my, my cursor to the left here. This is a map of northern Arizona. And you'll see Flagstaff down here, the Forge Ethic project up here where the red star is. And you'll see this is a, a wind speed map. It's a, it's a desktop analysis. Uh, but the, the darker colors are lower wind speeds and the brighter colors are uh, higher wind speeds. And I would say that you really, to build a wind farm and have it be economically feasible, something that the utilities will actually work with, we need to be in that yellow area, so about seven meters per second to make it uh, a viable project. So that leaves us with a very limited, uh, very limited locations to develop wind. Uh, Coconino County happens to be Coconino County happens to be very fortunate in having this nice windy area over here. And so that's probably why you're seeing a concentration of wind farms in one area. But there's good reason for that. Over to the right here, this is the Forged Ethic Project, kind of sits all along here. And we're seeing wind speeds of about 7 meters per second. So we really feel it's a great site from a resource perspective. As noted, the second item that we're looking at here is making sure that we're in line with county guidelines. I hear the county, and I see it in the REO, talking about maintaining traditional land use, cumulative impacts. The beauty of a wind farm is that these turbines are spaced out. And the turbines allow for the landowners to continue preserving ranches, these large ranches, which, you know, sometimes the ranchers can struggle with droughts over the years. And so I've seen across the country that these wind farms have allowed folks to keep ranches within families. The way that this is, this project is set up also allows for continued conservation efforts and recreation efforts, so hunting and hiking. Additionally, we're right by a fantastic transmission line. We're going to interconnect into an existing substation. I have here, you know, limited ground disturbance because what we see for these turbines is, while we may have about 29,000 acres under lease, these turbines will probably only actually impact about 25 acres of that 29,000 for ground disturbance. There's also a pretty minimal visual impact. Our turbines are over one mile away from the nearest residencies. Wind is a great, great electric generation source because it does not use water to generate electricity. As Bob highlighted, the Forged Ethic Project is committed to avoiding all cultural-eligible sites. And we just got approval in from the State Historic Preservation Office. So we're excited about that as well. We've also been working with Arizona Game and Fish, the County Wildlife Planner, and U.S. Fish and Wildlife. Sorry, I'm getting an echo. Oh, okay. Not anymore. So we've been working with the agencies to make sure that we're developing this project in an environmentally responsible way. What does that look like? We started coordination back in 2020, ahead of even beginning studies. So we conducted a pre-construction wildlife survey plan and then presented that plan to Arizona Game and Fish Department and U.S. Fish and Wildlife. We received their feedback on the plan, made adjustments to the studies we were planning to do so that they were in line with what the agencies wanted to see, and then proceeded with the studies. Since then, we've had a one-year, you know, study review, reviewing what we've collected and adjusted our studies based on feedback from U.S. Fish and Wildlife. And then, a few weeks ago, we actually, we're about two, two and a half years in, we met with Arizona Game and Fish Department and plan to continue coordinating with both agencies. And from a federal perspective, we've also received what's called the terminations of no hazard, meaning that the FAA has approved for us to build up to a tip height of 656 feet, which is a little bit higher than what we're asking for from the county. So we believe that this project is very well-aligned with the REO and we greatly appreciate the time and effort that the county has put into developing the REO and also, you know, back in 2021, 22, collecting feedback from the community and industry experts. So thank you. And then the last element that we look at when we're determining where to build wind farms are the local utility needs. Arizona is seeing drastic increases in peak demand. We are hearing that from APS, SRP, and TEP. That demand is driven by both increased consumption. So things like the build-out of semiconductor facilities, chip manufacturers, data centers, the community adopting electric vehicles, and just population growth, as well as coal plant retirement. So I'm sure you're all familiar with Navajo Generating Station retiring a couple of years ago. Choya is set to retire here shortly. And so we're seeing that need for renewable energy. And the other key piece here is that wind creates a really balanced profile. So states in the West like Arizona have a fantastic solar resource, but solar only produces at one time of day. Whereas what we see with wind farms is they actually typically tend to blow in the evenings and the nights when there's a need, that solar is not meeting. So these wind farms create more grid stability. And that's what the utilities are looking for, are stable, reliable grids, diversified portfolios, whether that be wind, solar, natural gas, nuclear, et cetera. And so with the limited wind resource, there is definitely a need for this project. So to go into just addressing a couple of the questions here, a few I'd already prepared, a couple I will be able to speak to. So in the planning and zoning study session, there were some questions around visual simulations. I just want to highlight that these simulations, they're simulations there to help us understand scale, spatial relationships, and general visual characteristics. They're also just a snapshot in time. So they may appear different at one period versus another. And what I want to address on the visual simulations, if I'm hearing correctly, are questions around the accuracy of the visual simulations, a question around Highway 64 and the ability to see turbines from out that way, and the cumulative impact. So to address the first question, what we did was, not only did we have, you know, SWCA, Bob and the team went out to site with the commissioners a couple of weeks ago. I would have loved to be there, unfortunately. I'm not flying right now. I'm in my third trimester, expecting my first. So airplanes are off-limits at the moment, but I'm glad to hear that the team was able to get out there with a few of y'all. After that meeting, we had SWCA prepare basically a visual, oops, let me go back, visual simulation. So this was a visual simulation from a picture that was taken in 2022 of the BREC project. And we're actually really benefiting from BREC having already been built because we can then go out as of August 16th and take a photo. You'll see, it's a little bit greener than it was in November 2022. And you can see these turbines here. And what I would say is that I think, based on these photos, I do believe that the visual simulations are fairly accurate. Because it is a snapshot in time. But I think it's a pretty good snapshot to give us a decent idea of what things would look like. And so then, to address the next question around Highway 64. You can see here, this is a photo, a live photo from Highway 64. We had not been asked to do a simulation from 64 as part of the CUP package, but we hear the questions, we hear the concern, and we want to address it. So yes, you can see some of the BREC turbines from the highway. These turbines are measurements, we went back and measured, are anywhere from 13.1 to 13.9 miles from where this photo was taken. The Forged Ethic turbines are another seven to eight miles away from the BREC turbines. And so it's very unlikely that you'll be able to see the turbines. If anything, you may see a flicker of movement from the tips. But given the terrain, given the distance, we do not expect this to be, the Forged Ethic Project to add any further impact. And then the next question is on cumulative simulation. So we actually had SWCA go back and update the visual simulations from Highway 180. And this is the same, same but new visual simulation that Bob was sharing on his screen earlier to show cumulative. So you can see of the Forged Ethic and BREC projects here. And I, you know, fully acknowledge that the Highway 180 is the most impactful view, the most visible of the Forged Ethic Project. I will also just highlight that we went into this project trying to be as conservative and transparent as possible. So these turbines that we're using here have a tip height of 640 feet. And we have 100 turbines on there. So in reality, if we were to use a machine that's 640 feet, which is the 4.5-megawatt machine, we would only have 72 turbines out there for that size machine. We're limited by our interconnection position in the transmission queue. So the bigger the turbine we go, the less machines we would use. The other piece that's important to keep in mind, kind of the standard wind energy guidelines, is that for every one megawatt you build, you need about 100 acres. And that doesn't change from the type of turbine you use. It just means that if you use a bigger machine, you have to space the machines out even further so that they don't wake each other, similar to the way that you might see wake in like a wave in the water. We experience the same thing with wind. So, you know, we have redone the cumulative simulations. They're still pretty similar to what we had before in our application. And then, just before we close out, before I address the additional questions that came up tonight, I just want to highlight the amount of work and effort that has gone into this project. And it's not just RWE, it's not just our external consultants. We also recognize how much work planning and zoning has done to review our application, how much time the county has put in to the renewable energy ordinance. And we're just, you know, one piece of what's being built out here. And, you know, we started our work with Babett's and Arizona State Land Department back in 2019. Kicked off our campaigns with our first CUP with you guys late 2019. And then we've been working with Arizona Game and Fish and U.S. Fish and Wildlife since mid-2020 in order to kick off our environmental studies. And you'll see here, I have an arrow because I think it's really important to acknowledge that our intent is to continue working with the County Wildlife Planner, Arizona Game and Fish Department, and U.S. Fish and Wildlife to make sure that we are studying the wildlife out here and being good neighbors and good stewards of the land. And there's a handful of other more internal development activities that we will, we will and have and will continue to participate in. But just want to acknowledge the level of work that has gone into this. And then, Commissioners, I can either, I was hoping to have Billy Cordasco speak on the project. I can either do that now or I can address the questions that you all have. Which would you prefer?
Ms. Schwinn, this is Chair Antiviris. Why don't you go ahead and address the questions that came up? And then we'll move to Mr. Cordasco's presentation.
Okay, perfect. So we'll start from the top. I did my best to jot them down here. Okay, so we will start with the cumulative impacts. I think, you know, we've tried to address here in our presentation by redoing the cumulative impacts. I guess, are there further questions around cumulative impact from a visual perspective?
You know what, actually, what I would like to ask is, could you address the questions that were brought up by, there were three of us commissioners? The one I asked was regarding the six temporary met towers that will be up for a total of two years. What is the lighting going to be like on those?
Yes, ma'am. So, great question on the met towers. So currently, we have met towers up on-site that we're using for a measurement campaign to determine where to appropriately cite the turbines. Those all will come down for construction. What we're, the temporary met towers that we intend to stall are called power performance test towers. And they are part of, well, one, they're required by our financing so that we can receive what's called tax equity. And two, they're required for manufacturer warranty. And so what they do is we install those towers for six months. They have very similar lighting. So six months before we install the turbine, and they go in the exact location of the turbine. This is to measure wind shear. And normally, on sites that are not as complex of terrain, we would only put them up after the turbines go in the ground. But because the terrain is a little bit more complex with some bluffs and whatnot, in order to make sure we're measuring what's called wind shear, we have to put them in the exact location of the turbine for six months, take them down, install the turbine, and then put up met towers that, within kind of a similar vicinity of the turbines that we're measuring up, measuring to make sure that the turbines are measuring and running correctly. They will have the same sort of lighting that we currently have out on-site that's required by the FAA and the DOD. So the same, you know, sort of like blinking.
Yeah, describe that, please.
Yes, so it's, they're red. They blink at night. I'm not sure exactly how to describe them further, sorry.
No, actually, you have answered the question because for two years, there will be six temporary towers that will have red blinking lights on them.
Yes, and I would say, you know, two years is conservative, as are the six. The tricky piece, in all honesty, is that we have to get sign-off from the manufacturer. And so, you know, if everything runs smoothly and the manufacturer came back and said, we only need, you know, two or three, that would be great. A project of this size, we believe that six would be the max. And the two years is a little bit, it gives us enough buffer room that we can comfortably say, if we hit a wall or we hit some issues along the way with the testing, that we would still be able to get those towers down within the two, full two years.
Okay, okay. One question that came up during your presentation for me was you mentioned that there is going to be no water used for electric generation. And I understand that. Do you know how much water will be used during construction and where will the water come from? This area is, I know this area well, and that's why I'm asking the question. It is a very precious and limited resource.
Absolutely. I'm not going to guess on the exact volume of gallons that'll be used because I don't know off the top of my head. What I can say is that the water will be used for foundations. Our intent is to, likely, we're going to have to haul in water. We're looking at using similar resources as, you know, what NextEra used, what Clenera intends to use. We're also looking into the possibility of a well, depending on whether or not that is feasible. And we'll be working with the landowner to continue finding the most reasonable resource and least impactful resource that we can.
Okay. Okay, so the answer really, just if I could, could say is, is you don't know on either of the questions that I asked regarding water. The answer is you don't know.
I don't know specifically, correct. I won't know until I have the exact turbine bottomed out. But we don't sign a turbine technology until we have all of our permits in hand. So it's a little bit of a chicken or egg situation, unfortunately.
Okay, okay. All right, the other questions that were asked by the commissioner, because I want to keep everything in order here this evening. It was asked by Commissioner Walsh, and her question was about the ground disturbance. How are these turbines going to be erected? It was asked by Commissioner Walsh and her question was about the ground disturbance. How are these, uh, turbines going to be erected? She was concerned about the roads. You know, I think someone said helicopters will not be used. So it will be, I believe, a crane was suggested. If you could address that. And then the next question, the third and final question by Commissioner Tohe was for a, um, an analysis, excuse me, an analysis of the feedback from the indigenous, uh, tribes. So those are the two questions. If you could please answer those.
Absolutely. Okay, so we will start with the, the cranes and the ground disturbance. So yes, uh, we will be using cranes. Um, the way that these cranes are set up and it's impressive to see the, how large they, they have gotten. Um, so when we bring them up the main access road, uh, they are what we call broken down, meaning they're, they're not actually erected yet. And so we're able to keep the footprint smaller while they are not erected. Um, then the terminology that's often used in construction is once you get onto the site, they, they crawl. Um, and that's when the machines are opened up. And so when we're coming up the access road, when we're coming from one eighty up onto our project site, the cranes will be broken, broken down. Um, so the footprint should not be as large on those main roads. I, I can't speak to, I can't speak to Nextera and how, how they used roads or, or cranes. And that's not, that's not our project, but I can speak to how RWE uh, brings in cranes. So we would have them broken down until we brought them up to site. And then, um, they, when we're going from along the string roads and installing the turbines, they would be opened up. Um, yes, you do typically when those machines are opened up, um, and crawling, the, the footprint is typically a little bit bigger than the roads. Um, what we often see is the main access roads, especially if you have a multiple developers or, or multiple, uh, uses, the, the main access road, what we often call the, um, spine road is typically about twenty feet so that you can have two-way traffic. And then, once you get onto the actual, the interior of the project site, you have string roads. And so those roads uh, are brought back down to sixteen feet for operations. Um, the reason that they, that they would be, um, widened beyond that would typically be due to terrain challenges. So if the, um, if there are issues with the elevation and how flat or, or uneven the roads are, then, then you would see us widen it. Um, you may see roads be widened for turn radii, um, particularly when delivering blades. Um, but the intent is always to bring them back down to the appropriate size. Um, and then that's of course when, when weed management comes into play. And I, you know, I don't want to, um, downplay that, that task because weed management, it, it is a big undertaking. I actually really appreciate uh, Jess's note about the fact that you may not, you know, you may, you may plant seed and it may or may not take, and you don't necessarily know that right away. It can take some time. Uh, that is why it is important for us to, um, one, for us to self-report and two, to get feedback. Um, from, from the landowner, from the community. Um, then I think what will be great with that main access road, we, we would love to use the same road as Nextera and Clanera. Transparently, uh, I think all parties would like that. It, it actually saves on maintenance costs, which is great because it allows us to do even more when it comes to weed management. It also means that we should be out there holding each other accountable to weed management. Um, and I, that's one hundred percent our intent. Have I addressed?
I'm going to ask Commissioner Walsh if her question has been answered.
There it is. Um, yes, I, but I did hear Commissioner Tohe's question about the, um, amount of sound these blades make in operation. I didn't hear the answer to that.
Yes, and that was, yes, that was the second part of Commissioner Tohe's question. So Ms. Wynn, I did neglect to mention that, but if you could answer that after you address the indigenous reports that you've, or analysis.
Yes, absolutely. So, um, the RWE team has been coordinating, uh, as part of the CUP. We sent out mailers to a handful of, um, tribal nations that were selected by county planning and zoning. Uh, determined that county planning and zoning determined which ones were appropriate to reach out to, uh, across Arizona. Um, the two that we heard back from were the Hopi Nation and the Navajo Nation. And, uh, we had a phone call with the Hopi Nation. Um, their general feedback, and this is, it's been a couple of years. Um, general feedback was around, um, it was around, I'm trying to think, um, there wasn't, there wasn't a lot of feedback, but I believe there was a question around, um, potential eagle take and the ceremonies that the Hopi conduct, uh, with the eagles and seeing if, um, there's potential to, um, if there was take, if there would be potential to, um, provide uh, the take to the Hopi Nation. That's a, a very difficult ask, uh, because there are regulations and rules around US Fish and Wildlife that, um, we, we don't have the ability to change. Um, but we hurt, we, you know, we hear the question. Um, it's something that, you know, we're open to looking into. Uh, it's just not something I can speak to today and say that we, we can't address outright. Um, as for the Navajo Nation, we, I believe we had a phone call in the twenty-two or twenty-three. And then, um, we've met with the Navajo Nation and held, um, or there for a couple of chapter meetings. So one chapter meeting in twenty twenty-three, uh, where we presented on the project, and then another chapter meeting in twenty twenty-four. Um, and I'm actually, I'm really proud of the teams, um, and the Navajo Nation, uh, being able to share information back and forth. Um, you know, one of the questions to Commissioner Tohe's, uh, point i- is around noise and, and the wildlife. Um, so I'm glad that you, that you bring it up. If, if you're open, I, I am happy to talk about it because it's also something that we, you know, spoke with the Navajo Nation about. Um, the, the great thing about the county REO is that you have a setback. And so we've done a noise analysis. Um, and with that setback, uh, we're, we are well within the limits of, um, the noise standards set by the county at the, excuse me, um, at the property boundary. And so we'll not have any noise impacts to the Navajo Nation or, um, any wildlife on their property or, um, grazing animals. The other piece of this is that we operate wind farms across the country. And the wildlife, particularly the terrestrial animals, are, are not particularly bothered by the wind turbines. Um, particularly those, um, the corridors, because of how spaced out the wind turbines are. There are eight, the animals that have, um, migration paths through the project are not, they're not impacted. They're still able to migrate through the project area. And so what we, what we've seen on a handful of our projects actually are, um, sometimes you see the cows, um, on the ranches will hang out in the shade of the turbines. Um, we've even seen deer uh, in the wintertime, like out in West Texas, when they get some, some ice and snow that we've seen the deer huddle up to the turbines because they're warm. Um, and so that indicates to us that they're not particularly bothered by the turbines, which is, is great.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Wynn. I'm going to ask Commissioner Tohe if her question has been adequately answered.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I think with the animal, um, and migration and noise was answered. However, I still feel like there's not, there wasn't enough information on the feedback from Navajo Nation or Hopi regarding, um, do, you know, do, do they welcome this or do they feel more concerns? Uh, I guess that's where I'm going with this question. Thank you.
Yes, no, that, that, I, I, I appreciate that and thank you for, for reminding me. Um, yes, so, uh, the Navajo Nation, we actually received a letter um, from the Cameron Chapter, uh, in support of the project, and that's been included as an, um, I believe, an exhibit in our conditional use permit application. Um, we also have in our conditional use permit application, a, a history, like a log of communications back and forth between the Navajo Nation. Transparently, um, they have been more engaged than the Hopi Nation. Uh, one of the other concerns that the Navajo Nation brought up was around the lava flow, which is east of our project and towards Highway eighty-nine. And initially, when we leased up this project, we actually had intended to use the existing, um, Tubbs Road from Tubbs Ranch Road coming from eighty-nine to, um, into our project area. However, we heard the feedback from the Navajo Nation. Uh, we heard the feedback from the landowner and the county around concerns of disturbing that, that lava flow. And so we, we pivoted. Um, and so while in some ways that created a little bit more challenges for us. It means that we have to negotiate more crossing agreements uh, with Nextera and Clanera. Um, but we are fortunate that they've been really good neighbors. Um, and so we're working through all of those now to make sure that we can use the, the existing access road from Highway one eighty and build it out up into our project site. Um, that was, I would say, the other big concern that came out of the Navajo Nation. Um, I do have my community engagement, um, team member Lucero on the call. Lucero, were there any other major items that, that you recall from our meetings with Navajo or Hopi?
Yeah, thanks, Morgan. Uh, my name is Lucero. I am based out of San Diego, California, supporting RWE with community engagement. Um, one of the feedback questions we got, um, was also just around, um, local hiring. We, we mentioned, you know, the economic benefits of the project. And, um, they wanted to, to ask a little bit more about how much training is, is given to potential, um, employees or what kind of requirements and how much we emphasize and put a focus on local hiring. And I, I think Morgan spoke really well to that in terms of um, being fairly open to, you don't have to have certifications or training ahead of time. Um, so there, we did kind of address that and, um, sent over information afterwards. But yeah, I, I would point more towards the log. Um, uh, that was the, the only other feedback that I think we got.
Okay, uh, all right. This is Chair Aunt Taveras. Uh, thank you, uh, Lucero and Ms. Wynn. Uh, Commissioner Tohe, anything further?
No, that was it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. Wynn, go ahead in your presentation, please.
Um, so the, are there, are there any other questions or can I hand the floor over to, um, Billy?
Um, well, I actually do have one and it goes to the visual. And what I'm going to do is I'm looking at, I'm on page one seventy-nine and I believe this is, is of the staff report. And it's, uh, this is actually in the, in your narrative and it's section three point five, cumulative visual effects. And the last sentence of this says, overall, given the lack of existing infrastructure and quantity of wind turbines seen from KOP six, the cumulative effects of both the Babbitt Ranch Energy Center and Forged Ethic Energy Facility Project would result in moderate to strong visual contrast. Can, can you break that down? What, what does that really mean?
Yeah, I, you know, and I, I think this was written before we had the, the cumulative simulation with both B rec and forged ethic together. Um, so wi- without B rec there and, 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 you know, when you add forged ethic, there, there is a change in the visual landscape, particularly from Highway one eighty. Um, and I'm happy to, to share screen again, just so you can see. Uh, they're with me here.
So, so when you say strong visual contrast, like what's a synonym for that?
You know, I, I, I'd probably prefer to defer that question to our visual sim expert. Because I think they, they'll be able to better answer that. Uh, Chris, are you, are you on the line?
I am. Good evening. Chris Bakke, B O C K E Y, seven one six three Cottonwood Tree Drive, Colorado Springs, Colorado, eight oh nine two seven.
Mr. Bakke, or Bakke, could you address that, that wording that I just referred to in the, um, applicant's narrative?
Yes, so when we talk about contrast, we're, we're breaking down the, the components of the project as we view it into, uh, basic design elements of form, line, color, and texture. And as we think about the project as it's introduced into the landscape that does not have these turbines, we discuss and we look at those components, the form. So the overall structure of the turbine, the line, upright vertical nature, the horizontal nature of the blades, the line, uh, itself, the coloring, you know, the, the kind of off-white to light gray coloring and the texture as a whole. So the texture, we can be almost think of it as a bristly texture if you were a giant and you ran your hand across the landscape. So we talk about contrast, we think about all those components as one. And when we talk about moderate to strong contrast, the moderate, uh, is, you know, of course, a little bit less of a contrast, but a stronger contrast is going to show or indicate that the introduction of the project, uh, deviates from the existing landscape character, if you will. Does that clarify your question?
Uh, yeah, and so strong would be it, it really impacts.
It would, yes. So typically we look at it on a range from none to lower, weak, moderate, and then, uh, typically strong.
So is strong the, at the, the end of the contrast spectrum?
Uh, yes, I would agree with that.
Okay, so with that, and I know that everyone here knows that the commission, um, we are making a land use decision. And it's, it's, we, we've got to compartmentalize it and, and really, and talk about this within that context. And so the applicant self-admittedly says that this is going to be a strong visual contrast. So my question then to you, um, would you consider this a negative visual contrast? And how do you see this as consistent with and conforms to the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan?
Yeah, so I, I can address that question. And, and Chris, you know, if, if I need you for some of the more technical items. Uh, to Chris's point, the, the contrast is, is one element of the, the visual simulation. Um, in regards to the REO and, um, county planning, and there's a lot of factors to take into consideration. Um, and a lot of factors that when we develop a site, we have to take into consideration. Um, and we believe that this site is consistent with the REO for a handful of other, other reasons. The, you know, there is a need for renewable energy, um, and a want for renewable energy, clean energy that keeps the air clean, um, helps with, uh, climate change and, um, wildfires. Um, so there's, you know, one positive impact. There's also the land use element here. Um, we see that these wind farms allow ranchers to continue, um, keeping these large ranches where they're able to continue ranching cattle. Um, it also allows the ranches to stay, um, operating in, you know, a hunting fashion, uh, recreation, hiking, et cetera, rather than having tracks divided. Um, and so, yeah, there, there are some trade-offs. Um, I, you know, I'm not going to say that you can't see the turbines because, because you can. Um, but the, you know, the, the question becomes then. But the, you know, the the question becomes then is that visual impact more negative than all of the positives that the wind farm brings to to the community? I personally believe it is. RWE believes it is. You know, I'll let Billy speak to it, but I'm fairly confident that that he believes so as well. But ultimately, Commissioner Chair, you know, you guys have to decide on that.
Okay, and so going back to, and I understand your your comments about the advantages of this, the ones that you mentioned. But I'm I'm talking specifically about the visual. And that's what I want my question. It's a very narrow question. And I'm asking that you give it give me a very narrow answer. And that is the applicant has stated in their application that this is going to have a strong visual impact. And one of the things that we have to consider is the visual impact. And so how do you see, how can you make an argument for saying this is consistent with and conforms to the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan regarding the visual impact?
Yeah, so, you know, I would say from a visual impact perspective, there are very limited locations to develop a wind farm. And as rural as this location, so if there's going to be wind in Coconino County, I would say you're going to be very hard pressed to find a more remote and less impactful from a visual perspective location.
But but I'm talking about the visual because there is going to be an impact and it's it's self admitted in the applicant's narrative. It is self admitted that this is going to have a strong visual impact. And I'm asking you to get to make an argument saying, but it's it's okay because it still fits in. It's still consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan. And I I just want to say that this is on a scenic byway, a designated scenic byway. This is a scenic byway that goes from Flagstaff to Valley and it is traveled by people going to the Grand Canyon. So although this may be considered remote and rural and all of those things, the visual impact has to be considered. And I'm asking you to help me understand how this is consistent with and conforms to the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan again, keeping the answer narrow to the visual impacts.
Yes, so I guess, you know, and I'll I'll defer back to Chris here in a moment. It's not, what we have here is not a strong visual impact. It's it's one element. It's a moderate to strong contrast, and that's a very technical term. It does comply with the this project does comply with the comprehensive plan. Yes, you can see some turbines from a scenic highway. You know, the question then becomes impact and, you know, different people have different different feelings on on what you see. You know, I think with with Perrin Ranch, and you have Tom, feel free to jump in. My understanding is that when Perrin Ranch came out, I believe, Tom, was it the railway? That was excited about the turbines and actually felt that it was a draw to the area. I will say, you know, before I was even in the wind industry, my first experience was seeing turbines in Maui. And my sister pointing them out to me and saying, look, this is the way of the future. This is how Maui is going to stay clean and protect its oceans and its air. But, you know, in impact is very subjective. It's a personal matter.
Okay, I I've heard, okay, and fair enough, fair enough. I've heard your answer. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and ask Commissioner Best. I see your hand raised.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I believe that you heard my earlier question about invasive weeds. And and I'll comment on on it more when we get to Commissioner comments. But my direct question is, let me say first of all that I think you have a very thorough weed plan. Amazingly, I'm not going to propose any new conditions. That's not like me. Because I think you got it all. The question is, and I'm I'm I just want to make sure that it's actually going to happen. It's almost a cultural issue. When you're setting up a wind farm, dollars are being spent, time is being spent. You're on a tight schedule. But you never give up on safety. Because safety is part of your culture. And I'll comment about it, as I say, in a little bit, but my question is, can you develop a culture of looking for invasive weeds and keeping them from getting ahead of you during this process, basically following your own guidelines in in your four hundred pages, which I've read and they're good. Do you have that experience? Have you had this challenge before? You know, you kind of wouldn't have this challenge in farmland, but in this kind of land, you do. So if you could just respond to that, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. And I I really appreciate you acknowledging, you know, the thoroughness of this application. It's it's been a lot, a lot of work over a matter of years. So so thank you. Yeah, I think you bring up a great point about about the culture because that's that's spot on. And transparently, I've seen I've seen some sites that nail it. I've seen others where, you know, we've come back and we've had to, we've had to correct it, had to course correct. To your point, invasive weeds are a challenge. And it varies depending on site to site. So we have projects in in Texas where, you know, mesquite is a challenge. We have projects in the Northeast that require much more thorough post-construction monitoring and reporting around invasive weeds, whereas, you know, Texas, they they don't have the same requirements. California tends to have more thorough requirements. But at the end of the day, it comes back, you're right, it comes back to who's on site. What is that culture? I think one area where I can personally commit is right up front with construction, starting off the bat, making sure that those plans are shared and that people are aware of the plans. And then coming back when we start operations, excuse me, and doing the same thing. We oftentimes have these big kickoffs at the start of construction where we review wildlife reporting, mitigation, cultural strategies, et cetera. We should be doing the exact same thing at the start of operations so that, you know, not only is our our site manager aware of it or our management team, but also our technicians. And they should be, you know, self-reporting. That's important. And that's that's something that I think as an industry, we can we can continue to work on and do better.
Commissioner Best, does that answer your question?
I think it does, and I'll I'll have some more comments during Commissioner comments. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. Wynn, if you would like to go ahead and continue your presentation, please.
Yes, thank you. Billy, I'd love to have you to say a couple of words on on the project and Forged Ethic.
Okay, can can you can you all hear me?
Yep, we can hear you really well.
It's Bill Cordasco, twenty-seven twelve North Marion Drive, Flagstaff, Arizona, eight six zero zero one. Well, Madam Chair, Commissioners, I'm sure sure special to get to say hi to you and visit just a little bit. There's been two very outstanding presentations this evening by staff and by RWE. And I sure appreciate it to to see and to hear those. My my particular job might come across a little bit interesting at first, but but it's definitely really cool. And that is, is why is this project called Forged Ethic? And interestingly, the county plays a role in that. It goes back to two thousand and three, when we were all working together on the first comprehensive plan for Coconino County. About the same time, Babbitts was was starting to pioneer kind of their land use and 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 how all of it was going to fit into their family business and 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 reflect their their history and their past, but also really embrace their future. We've all been together through those years, including the two thousand and fifteen Coconino County Comprehensive Plan, which was just outstanding when it came to really defining the values and the principles and of course, the ethic itself and the land use ethic for driving that that document forward. And you all are going through a similar process now. Well, all along the way, Babbitts was not only learning from what the county was doing, but also, you know, putting it in place, you know, and and putting the things that were unique to Babbitts in place as well. And really, what what then came out of it, of course, was the the REO and all the efforts that that you all had to play in that. So we've been on a journey for a long time with renewable energy and other land uses. And they're very parallel, and I know you all appreciate that. But Forged Ethic, really, it was simply just saying, you know, that for Babbitts, we define it that 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 at the heart of Babbitt Ranch community, that which truly matters most is our effort being aware of our character, principles, values, and ethics. And really just being a part of something bigger than ourselves. That's what we strive for. That's what we participate in. That's what we hope for. These projects that are then presented to the county and this particular wind farm, you know, that they fit into what Babbitt Ranches believes to be that forged ethic and that 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 effort to to embrace the land uses in a diverse diversified and inclusive way. But with all that being said, it is also about our future. And hopefully, we're in sync with the county as well on that, that this is about our futures. As Morgan suggested, you know, the the broader ripple effect of these projects is rather extensive. Babbitts hired a a consultant out of California last year because the owners had similar questions that you all have tonight. So so we addressed the same questions, same concerns and same thoughts. And our question to them was, can you take these these potential projects on Babbitts and actually go and quantify the ripple effect of what these projects mean over the life and term of the projects? What is a real benefit, not just providing, in this case, eighty-five thousand homes with renewable energy or removing a certain tonnage of carbon emissions into the air? But what is the real, what is really, tell us, how does this really benefit that next generation, as we'd like to talk about? And they went through and they and it was very, very meaningful, the results. We did have a meeting in, I think it was last October, and the county folks, staff were invited, along with all the other renewable energy companies that have been involved here at Babbitts. And there were, of course, the the state and federal agencies and so on and so forth. It was quite the group and it was really reflective of really the folks that have participated in getting this our this renewable energy ordinance application to you right now, same people. And to hear the benefits, everything from, you know, the waters to the air to to just, you know, other carbon things to terrestrial issues, so on and so forth. At that time, when they presented the dollar numbers to us, they said if if all the projects in and around Coconino County were to go through and 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 be quantified for their ripple effect over the period of time of the projects, it would be one point eight billion dollars a year in tax and other savings. It was massive. But what was more impressive was how much life is added to people's years of life because of lack of things, issues with like asthma and other lung conditions and so on and so forth. It was really, really impressive. I'm not here now to 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 present that, but I'm just telling you how Babbitts got to where we are right now. And so with the forged ethic, really, it was driving us, how do we stay committed to these, you know, this character, these principles, these values? A comprehensive plan that is filled with the same set of values and and the diversity and inclusiveness of all of those values across the Coconino County and the community of all of us. And 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 how do we continue to support that and be a part of that? And so, you know, I'm here tonight to just tell you that that we feel good about this project. And and of course, we greatly appreciate all your efforts in reviewing this and upholding the comprehensive plan. So that's my little presentation for you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cordasco. This is Chair Aunt Taveras. I'm going to ask if any commissioners have any questions for you at this time. And I'm not seeing any hands raised, so I'm going to go ahead. Again, thank you, Mr. Cordasco and for the work that your family does. Ms. Wynn, if you would like to go ahead and continue your presentation, please.
So that that's all we have. Unless there's further questions, just thank you.
Okay, and I'm just going to ask one more time, Commissioners, any questions for the applicant at this time? Okay, I'm seeing none. So at this time, I'm going to ask if there is anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission on this case this evening. If so, please raise your hand and I will call on you, state your name and address for the record. And three minutes. Mr. McNeely, would you please time and give a one-minute warning so that the speakers can wrap it up, okay?
Will do.
Okay, Chief Trotter, you're up.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner and the other Commissioners. First of all, Robert Trotter, sixty-five ninety-three High Country Lane. I'm the Fire Chief of High Country Fire Rescue, Junipine Fire District and Woods Fire District. Presently, we do have an agreement with the RWE for the Forged Ethic Wind Farm Project. High Country Fire looks forward to working with Morgan and her team to establish a good firewise plan for the fire safety of the location and for the site. Couple of the things that I wanted kind of cover listening to the presentation is one of the Commissioners had a question about the width of the roads on the proposed project. That's kind of based on our request, because we see the layout of the wind farms, just like the Perrin Wind Farm and the Babbitt Wind Farm, that we use these roads as fire breaks. So if a fire does break out like it did a few weeks ago on the Babbitt Wind Farm, we use the roads as fire breaks. Some areas, depending on the vegetation density, might be a little wider per our request so that we can actually fight the fire, stop the fire from advancement, which we did on the Babbitt Wind Farm. We, there was a fire on the ranch area. We actually were able to, because of the roads and using the brakes, keep it from coming on to the wind farm itself and pushed it farther east to where the DFFM came and assisted and extinguished the fire. And then the other question one of the Commissioners had about the Russian thistle. Trust me, I've been battling it on my property, and if I see it out on the wind farm, I will contact Morgan and get her team out there to remove it. Do you guys have any questions for the firewise or our fire plan for the location?
Commissioner Bass, go ahead, please.
Yes, if you blade, you're going to have weed issues. What about just mowing and not blading? I mean, if you if you blade the sides of the roads, you're going to get those Russian thistle as thick as can be, and they're going to carry fire just as well as the adjacent grass. I would think that somehow mowing would be more practical, because you'd be mowing. You you wouldn't kill the native plants. You'd be mowing the native plants. Does that make sense?
Yes, and actually, the shorter the vegetation is out there with the weeds, any of the wild grasses along the roadways. You know, using a weed eater, mowing them closer to the ground actually is better, especially during the monsoons. If they're short, it holds the dirt in. And we can control the fire a lot better with a mowed area along the shoulder of the roadway.
Yeah, you might have to do some some dirt work in some areas, but I would think in a lot of areas, you know, hopefully not a weed eater, but some kind of a big machine, there's a lot of roads out there.
Right.
Be working investment.
The other thing too is all the roads will be also gravelled. And then over time, some of the gravel gets on this shoulder and helps with the weed abatement also. We noticed that heavily up on the the Babbitt Wind Farm with their roadways.
Okay, thank you very much.
No worries. Thank you, sir.
Okay, I'm going to ask if there is anyone else in the public that wishes to address the commission on this case this evening? If so, please raise your hand. And seeing that Chief Trotter, did you finish your comments?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, I am not seeing any. So at this point, I'm going to close it to the public and open it at commission discussion. Vice Chair Burton, we're going to book in this. I'm going to have the vice chair start, and then I will pick it up at the end. So if you would please start, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. It's a lot of information to take in, and this is obviously a very long process to do all this. I think my absolute biggest concern is that visual impact along one eighty, because we have so much traffic that runs that road that heads out to the canyon. So that, right now, that is kind of what I'm stuck on. And I I think that the visual sim, I understand, is if they stick with the the height that they're currently planning, it's going to be reduced, it sounds like, by almost thirty percent visually, so that that does help. But it it is still the one thing that is kind of gnawing at me right now. So that's the only comments I have at the moment, so we'll let the next person.
Okay, all right, Commissioner Ruggles. Commissioner Ruggles, we can see that you're unmuted, but we cannot hear you. Can you hear me? Okay, Commissioner Ruggles, try again. We still can't hear you. Okay, Commissioner Ruggles, this is Chair Antiveras. What I'm going to do is I'm going to go ahead and move to the next commissioner. So I'm going to give you a little time to hopefully listen to the commissioner's comments and also get the audio working. We may have to do what we did with you at the last meeting, is have you call in by phone. But I'm going to go ahead and move to the next commissioner this time, and I will come back to you. Commissioner Tohe.
Okay, I think that I'm 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 okay with pretty much everything. I think that one of the trade-offs for me is that there's 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 the visual impact that could that could be hard to take. Maybe some noise in the area. It sounds like when I when I went to do some information search, it sounds like the turbines could be noisy and but I guess that's kind of taken care of with some of the some of the visits and some of the reporting that has been done. So that that's one thing that I was concerned about, especially for the animals that are migrating through there or having their homes in that area. One thing I think that that keeps that I'm I'm okay with right now is just the fact that, well, one more concern is probably, which is years down the road, is their their, what they call their end of life, which could be a chore to do, to taking down, taking them down and having all kinds of situations regarding that. But I guess the the process in this is that the trade-off, I guess, would be that this is cleaner energy versus the fossil fuels and those kinds of things. And that is something that is in in agreement with our comprehensive plan. So I take comfort in at least that. So right now, that's my comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Tohe. Commissioner Ruggles, I'm going to come back to you. I see you're unmuted. Can you try again? Okay, Commissioner Ruggles, we still can't hear you. On, maybe we could try one of two things. Why don't you leave? And then come back in and see if that will somehow correct? Okay, he's doing that. Let's give it just a minute, because I want him to hear. Okay, Commissioner Ruggles, I see that you're back.
Okay.
Oh, we can hear you now. Great, go ahead.
Well, I do have to comment on that. I was unmuted, not from my end, but from your end there very early on. I don't know why, but you do need to know that. However, this worked. So am I okay to go ahead with my comments here?
Oh, yes, absolutely. Please go ahead.
I'm going to adjust the volume here on my end of this first because that made some changes in my speakerphone. Okay.
And that is, yes, we can.
Okay, first thing.
Go ahead.
Great. First things first. I reviewed every single page of this document that went with the application. And that includes, of course, staff analysis and recommendations. So I found it to be, one, extremely thorough and detailed. Same thing with the staff report, extremely well done, of course, and extremely detailed as well. The applicant's presentation was extremely good from an engineering standpoint, which is one of the things that I spent a great deal more time on than some of the other parts of the report. And it was also thorough, and the presentation was excellent. Now, I guess one thing that I didn't consider that would come up would was the visual presentation. And the composite from viewpoint six, KOP six. I think I'm going to get my opinion out there on this. It was everything, including what is all of it already there from the brick buildout of the wind farm. And that complicates matters a little bit, because basically, the way I looked at this is that what will be built with this current use permit is a part of it that is considerably further to the east than what you see in the simulation, because the simulation included both. And it's further out there. What you're going to see from this application is going to be considerably less, in my opinion. When I looked at all of the simulations, I looked at everything. I looked at the sun angle, the time of day, the year, time of day during the year, the time those were taken, and vantage point that was being used and with the sun angle, the azimuth as well, and where I would expect to look at things from that vantage point based on all of the things I have just mentioned. And I think that from KOP six along one eighty that the visual impact of what we are looking at now for a COP is going to be considerably less than what is already there. Okay, that being said, I want to move on to a couple of other things. I'm going to have to compliment the applicant on the these sound level analysis. It was thorough. It was done in accordance with standards that are currently being used. The data presentation was excellent, as well as the conclusions. Shadow flicker, the same thing. I think that their presentation was excellent. The engineering analysis was, again, just exceptionally good. And the impact is going to be quite minimal with respect to that. So other than that, the best I can do at this point is to say that, considering all things and balancing everything that has been presented in terms of benefits and a few negatives, that I can most certainly make the findings for approval of the CUP. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. Commissioner Best. Commissioner Best, you may be muted. We can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now. Yep, go ahead, please.
Thank you very much. Well, I was very impressed by this presentation, the four hundred pages, and I also at least skimmed them all. I wouldn't say I read every word. They're basically in compliance with the REO, the Renewable Energy Ordinance. The REO does say ideally ten miles from a visceral resource. And on one eighty, Highway one eighty, this is five. And we could have some angst about that. We took a tour out there a few weeks ago, and I think we all concurred that looking at what's there now, the brick project of Babbitt Ranches Energy Center, it was more visible than it seemed to be in the simulations that we saw for that project. So that sort of taught me a lesson. But facts on the ground are that that if there is damage, it's already done. You're going to see brick and this project is going to be farther away, so you will see the towers from this project, but you you've already got towers in your vision. It's not generally that bad. It it only really appears a few places on one eighty. People will notice. I think sixty-four is okay. I think eighty-nine is going to be, that's, I think, thirteen miles away, so that's more than twice as far away. Big picture, we are industrializing our landscape. And that, to me honestly, is a little painful, and we do it because we need to do it to create renewable energy, and I think we all understand why we need to do that. So hopefully, we are doing this in a way, we talked about brownfields before. Someday, maybe we'll come up with geothermal energy or fusion energy, and we will need these towers. We'll take them down. And we won't have damaged the landscape in a way that can't be recovered. That's the, really, the whole point of the REO, as far as I'm concerned. I thought also, I I thought overall, there was good communication, there seemed to be, with the the tribal authorities. Certainly, this is going to affect Cameron more than anywhere else. There's going to be some shadow flicker out in that direction. But I I feel like there was pretty decent communication, better than some projects we've seen. In general, there's a lot of information and a lot of studies and input from highly qualified people about animals. So what we're trying to preserve is we as we preserve our our ecology is plants and animals and landforms. That's what makes it up. We've got a lot of organization looking at animals. Arizona Game and Fish and U.S. Fish and Wildlife can answer pretty much any question you ask them. And they are on it. They're going to be monitoring it. We don't have organizations like that for plants. We should, but we don't. When you think about it, without plants, there are not going to be any animals. And so we need to keep the plant community intact. And I know I go on about plants quite a bit. That's what I'm kind of known for, I think, as a commissioner. Why does it matter what's going on out there? So part of this is, part of this project is in the Great Basin grassland biotic community. So I did a little research on that, because I know cheatgrass is an issue. The Great Basin is generally between the Rockies and the Sierra Nevadas, most of Nevada and half of Utah. And cheatgrass is an issue. It's an issue to the tune of fifty million acres. Fifty million acres of the Great Basin is now covered with cheatgrass. It comes in, it gets established. It's green and nice and good to eat for about three weeks in the spring. It gets dry and prickly. Nothing can eat it pretty much. And then it burns, and it takes out everything else. And next year, you have, after a couple of cycles like that, you have a pure stand of cheatgrass, which is like a desert. And if that happened here, we would have no animals at all. So it's a serious issue, and I think it's addressed well in the plan. I think I was very impressed that the workers are going to be oriented to the plant communities, and they're going to be reporting invasive species. And I was impressed, too, that the REO requires three years of monitoring after decommissioning. And this plan gives us five years, which is really cool. And one of the issues with invasive plants is that the seeds don't all come up the next year. Once you let them go to seed, the seeds can come up for the next five or ten years. And so it's just so important to get them the first year. If you let something go, like what we saw on the side of the road, and you get those seeds in the ground, you're going to be out there for years. And the cost and frustration could be enormous. So as I said before, it's kind of a cultural thing. I don't know what The applicant's other experiences in other places, but here. If you disturb the topsoil. And you don't put it back, and if you're not right on it. And you don't do all the things that you say you're going to do in the plan, and the plan's good. You're gonna have weed issues that are gonna cost a fortune, and, you know, you get to a certain point with cheatgrass, no one knows what to do with fifty million acres of cheatgrass. No one has a clue, and we don't want to get to that. Point here, and with global warming, we don't quite know what the future holds. You know, cheatgrass is not so much here. But it could get a lot worse, and there could be other plants that also take off in a warming environment. So again. I like to use the word culture, which is just a series of mental habits and values. And technologies that a group of people share. And if you follow what's in the plan, I think we'll be in good shape. But there are always, you know, there are lots of things in the plan. There are a lot of competing issues, and I know people. I know money is not a trivial issue in any of this, and everything costs money, and there's a lot of competition for time and attention. So I urge you to form a culture that is. Responds to the plant community. And I can tell you, I'll be driving out there from time to time to see how you're doing, so. Again, congratulations on a good plan, and I can make the findings. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Best. Commissioner Walsh.
Thank you, Chair Ontiveros. I really can't add anything more to. What's been said. I, too, appreciate the enormous amount of work that went into this. By Forged Energy Team and by our. Community Development Team. Thank you for that work, and I can make the findings. Thank you.
Sorry, I was muted. Thank you, Commissioner Walsh. Okay, this is Chair Ontiveros, and I will start by saying that. I concur with my fellow commissioners that the analysis of both staff and the applicant were thorough. And excellent, and I realize that it was years in the making. So where I'm at tonight, I think, is a little bit different than where my fellow commissioners are. And where I'm at is. I'm going to give my comments, and then I would actually appreciate feedback from my fellow commissioners. So I will say that I have thoroughly read the staff report, the applicant's narrative, the citizen participation letters. I've considered the public comment that we received this evening and the discussion from my fellow commissioners, and I do not. I will not be making this decision lightly. Additionally, on August eighth, in this decision-making process, August eighth, twenty twenty-four. I went on the site visit for this case so I could see firsthand where the proposed wind turbines would be located. In order to help me understand the visual impact on the landscape. Because these turbines will be seen on two designated scenic corridors. Specifically, highway one eighty and Arizona scenic and six, well, these are not going to be seen on sixty-four. But also the Arizona scenic road, an Arizona scenic road and highway eighty-nine and Arizona Historic Road. All of these en route to the Grand Canyon, one of the seven natural wonders of the world, and also from the Arizona Trail. On July nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, I did a site visit with staff and three other commissioners to visit previously approved campgrounds. This site visit was completely unrelated to this evening's case. However, when we were driving out scenic highway one eighty from Flagstaff towards Valley. I couldn't help but notice that the real-life visual of the wind turbines looked nothing like the photo sims that were provided. To the Commission for the Approval of BREP. And in addition, when we were traveling on Historic Highway sixty-four, I saw BREP wind turbines that were never disclosed to the Commission. To be visible from highway sixty-four. This troubled me, and I made mention of this at the Commission's study session for this case that was held on July thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. That said, I do believe that the photo sims provided for this evening's case are accurate, and that troubles me. The first fifteen words in Policy fourteen and the Comprehensive Plan Utility Scale Energy Elements state that. The citing of utility scale projects and transmission lines shall consider the protection of view sheds. This is something that is very important to me because the natural beauty. Of our vast and sweeping panoramic views are what make Coconino County such a unique and desirable location. For residents and tourists from around the world. In our packet, in the letter dated June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, from the United States Department of the Interior. It states that the existing Pear and Ranch Wind Farm, located approximately fourteen miles southwest of Valley. Is visible from the park's north rim developed area on the Bright Angel Peninsula, which is approximately fifty miles away. They go on and say, therefore, we expect the proposed wind energy project to be visible from various areas of the park. Including the north and south rims and desert view. It continues on to state that the proposed location of the wind energy project at Babbitt Ranches would be in direct. Or nearly direct line of sight from various park locations to the San Francisco Peaks north of Flagstaff. Therefore, the park anticipates scenic views from the park to the peaks to be impacted by the proposed project. For several years now, I have voiced my concern about the cumulative impacts of these large utility scale projects. Although unrelated to this evening's case, but relevant to cumulative impacts. On the site visit I mentioned on August eighth, twenty twenty-four, we drove through BREP, a previously approved. And nearly adjacent utility scale energy development. And I was saddened to see the vast amount of invasive weeds lining both sides of the road as we drove through. An issue this commission strives so hard to prevent from happening. I mention it because it shows one of the impacts these projects have, regardless of the commission's best intentions. Somewhere, the ball was dropped, and invasive weeds are now in the natural environment. And that is an indisputable fact. I saw it with my own eyes. Under Guiding Principles, beginning on page seven of the Comprehensive Plan. It discusses decision-making principles, and on page ten states. Evaluate the effects of land use decisions cumulatively and over time. Long-term changes caused by land use decisions can be delayed and cumulative. Impacts may not be apparent for years or decades. In some cases, we may not recognize them until they reach a threshold. When impacts are dramatic. A series of seemingly innocuous site-specific changes in land use can combine to produce cumulative effects. That we cannot attribute to a single landscape scale event. Continuing on page ten, it talks about the precautionary principle and that. In some instances, we must simply make a no regrets decision. The previously approved nearby twelve thousand acre solar project has yet to be developed, and we still do not know the effects of this. The effects this development is going to have specifically on the antelope population. That we discussed at length at the hearing when we approved the solar project. The nauseous weed condition was not met on the first project. And it won't be good if it happens on the second one. It's not in Coconino County's best interest. And I think it's time to slow down in this area before we make an irreparable mistake to our natural environment, wildlife, and our view shed. I've been on this commission for fourteen years and have previously voted to approve four large utility scale renewable energy projects. In Coconino County during this time period. The two most recent of these approvals was the BREP approved on August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. Three years ago, and Solar K approved on June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two, two years ago. And these, I always knew the day would come when approving one more utility scale energy project. Would be a bridge too far for me. Today is that day. As a commissioner, I must balance between the values in the Comprehensive Plan. For preserving the view sheds, our natural environment, and our wildlife. Three of Coconino County's most valuable assets. And support for utility scale renewable energy projects. For me, because of the close proximity and possible cumulative effects of this proposed development. Next to two recently approved utility scale projects. Preserving and protecting the priceless natural environment, wildlife, and view sheds. Outweighs the benefit of approving another utility scale energy project. I want to emphasize the United States Department of the Interior. They expect visual impacts for the Grand Canyon. One of seven natural wonders in the world. The Grand Canyon is a valuable and priceless gem that must be protected. It's off limits for anything that will diminish it and degrade its value. And that is why I'm having such a hard time in this case this evening. It's a line I can't cross. I'm thinking about this for future generations. Trying to think how I would explain it even to my grandkids. This has been a really tough one for me. But make no mistake, Coconino County has been a leader and has given much to the renewable energy industry. But like with many things in life, there comes a time when enough is enough, and any more is unpalatable. And that is where I am at. And so therefore. Based on these reasons, I cannot make finding four. That this proposed conditional use is consistent with and conforms to the goals, objectives, and policies. Of the general plan, so I cannot vote to approve it this evening. Now, I know that there were other commissioners that, I'm thinking of Vice Chair Burton. I think I'm gonna go through, I'm gonna start at the top of the list, and I'm gonna go back through every commissioner. And I will just state that I know that I may stand alone in my decision this evening. But stand alone I will because I feel that strongly about protecting the visual resource. In a way, I feel like Dr. Seuss is the Lorax of view sheds. For a better way to describe where I'm at, I can't let one more go. So with that, I'm gonna run back through the commissioners, and then we will take a vote and go from there. Vice Chair Burton.
As I already mentioned, I was having a very difficult time with the sims. That I was seeing for the one eighty. Road. And. Everything he said was already the things that were running through my mind, and that's why this one has been difficult for me as well. It's very difficult to put that into words because. It's just really difficult for me to put into words because while I one hundred percent agree with renewable energy. I cannot help. The, I, and part of this is me coming from this, from a photographer's standpoint. I, I, I really do detest man-made things. In a beautiful landscape. But I override that when I'm looking at a big picture. But I also, I, I, I have to agree with Chair Ontiveros in that I feel like this is too much too fast. And it is coming right on the heels of, of. Projects that either have not been completed yet or were just completed. And it, it does, it does worry me. And. I, I feel like I wouldn't be quite as. Stuck on it. Having such an impact if it weren't so much of a clustered impact. Because that just, the, the overall map of where the turbines were gonna be located. And the sim from one eighty, it just felt like we were just, I, I felt like I was gonna be driving through Palm Springs. And that's like one of the, I think that's one of the country's first major wind farm areas, and. I mean, that's, that is all that is there, and that's all that stands out, so. I, I, I really, I, I am really having a hard time with this one. So I, I am also very curious what. The rest of my fellow commissioners think. Because I do also weigh their opinions very strongly because everybody on this commission has. Valuable insight and a different perspective to add. So I would like to, to continue on and have. A little bit more discussion from the rest of the commission on this.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair Burton. Commissioner Ruggles, do you have anything? More that you would like to add to the discussion at this time?
Well, a couple of things. I am. Going to have to say that. My perception here is a little different than yours. Nevertheless, that made it no less difficult. I have considered almost everything that you addressed. And I still look at it in terms of the big picture and to me. Yes, those are potential problems, but in terms of the way I look at it. They are not going to. Be something that will change my opinion in terms of making the findings. Relative to the Comprehensive Plan. Unfortunately, I know you pointed out the, the sentence that used the word shall. That's one we missed back in twenty fifteen when I was on the Comp Plan Committee for the update. It shouldn't have been there. That should have been a should, but that doesn't change. The fact that you have to look at that in terms of balancing everything we consider. In going forward, or perhaps not going forward with this. In terms of what you will see from the north rim of the Grand Canyon. I've been here in Arizona for quite a while now and covered a lot of territories, especially. The Arizona Strip and areas like that, Grand Canyon. Spent a lot of time working up there at. El Tobar on. Restoring the lighting on the front porch of El Tobar back in twenty nineteen. Fifty miles away. From the north rim. I have to look at how small. And almost how. Close to impossible to see, even though you could probably, under the right lighting conditions, the right time of day. Right time of year, you could probably see something that is going to be extremely small. One of the things I did when. We were on the Rio Committee, I looked at, well. Relatively, how large will an end, a windmill be, looking at it ten miles away? And did some of the math that went into that. And I, I've got to say that that is almost. Extremely difficult to see at that distance. Same thing, when you're driving along, spent a lot of time driving up highway one eighty-two. And. Passengers in the vehicle, yeah, you can probably look over to your right, headed up north to the valley. Yes, there are. Wind turbines out there. They're already wind turbines. And. What, I don't think the level is going to be as great as some people think in terms of what you're going to perceive as. what that, I don't think the level is going to be as great as some people think in terms of what you're going to perceive as, uh, well, a, a relatively, um, medium level of, uh, visual impact. Uh, now, the other thing that I have to say is that to some people, what, uh, they perceive as being a good thing. Uh, that is in the eye of the beholder. And so I know some people hate seeing windmills, uh, like this. Other people, I've talked to people from California. I've had friends in California that, uh, lived in an area that had a large number of them. And, um, that was one of the things they said, hey, when you come, when you're over here to visit. At least the first couple of times, you gotta go out here and see the windmills. It's a relative thing there. And I think the simulations have been, uh, quite well done in comparison to some we've had in the past. But it is not going to, I haven't heard anything. I, I appreciate the sentiments expressed, but I haven't heard something that is going to change my, uh, opinion about where this is going and what the big picture is. Uh, it, it's a balancing act, we all know. And in terms of balancing these things out, uh, I can just barely make the balance come out in the positive, but nevertheless, it is positive that I can still make the findings. So, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. Um, Commissioner Tohe, do you have anything else that you would like to add while we're at commission discussion?
I I think I am, um, concerned about what, what you did bring, what you did brought up. Regarding projects that have not been completed and or just completed. Which don't have a history of how they're working. And, um, and also can I ask a question on this new proposed farm? About wh- where they're gonna, who's gonna benefit from that? Is it? Is it local? Are local, uh, residents? Are they going to be part of the benefit benefactors from, from this farm?
Uh, uh, Commissioner Tohe, yes, you can ask questions because we need to ask all the questions. We need as commissioners to come to a decision. I, I, I believe I know the answer to that, but I'm actually going to ask Ms. Nguyen if you would please address this.
Yes, absolutely. And I'm going to just bring up the community benefits slide to highlight. The points of how, how this will help, um, benefit the, the local community. And so, um, we are estimating two hundred to three hundred temporary jobs. Which we will be hosting a local job fair for. We all also have ten full-time operations and safety positions. Our intent is to hire local as much as possible. I worked in recruitment for years before I, I pivoted to development. And I have personal experience in hiring wind technicians. And can very confidently say that we prefer to hire local, particularly in remote parts of the country. Uh, we find that locals are more committed to the project. They, uh, want to be in the area, whereas those that travel. Oftentimes they might leave because they're not near their families.
Uh, Ms. Nguyen, if, if I could just interrupt briefly. Um, the question that Commissioner Tohe asked was who is going to benefit from the energy that is created here?
Oh, I, sorry, I thought she was asking about what the, the residencies, um, residences benefit from, from the project. Um, I didn't realize it was about the, the power.
You know what, actually, you know what, Ms. Nguyen, hold on a minute. Let me make sure that it was not me that misunderstood the question. Commissioner Tohe, would you please ask your question again for clarification?
Chair, you're correct. I wanted to know who, who would be benefited by the energy this farm is producing.
Okay, so if you could narrow the answer on Ms. Nguyen for that question.
Yeah, so that, that depends on who, who we sign a power purchase agreement with. Um, so we've submitted this project into RFPs with, with APS, SRPTEP. Um, and we are waiting to hear back, you know, where the utilities direct the power to which particular residence. That's not something that, that we have any control over. Uh, until we have a PPA, unfortunately, we, we, we can't answer that question. The other element of this is that the utilities have outright said we're not, um, they want to see more qualified projects. They want to see projects that have conditional use permits in hand. Hence why, um, our neighbors, Nesterah and, um, Clonera are further along in the process than us. They, they went ahead and got their, their conditional use permit. So this, this permit is really important because it really allows us to proceed with the utilities. Um, and we only get a once, once a year window to actually submit this project. So if we, i- if we don't have this CUP in hand, um, ahead of the RFPs that are coming out here in the next month or two. Um, it, it also puts us in a really bad position and delays the project further.
Okay, Ms. Nguyen, would it be like if I could maybe drill down on on your, on your answer? I do understand what you're saying. Is it going to go to a different state? I mean, could you, could you, could you maybe even generalize it in that, um, in that context?
It, it depends on who picks up the power. You know, even the, the utilities have, um, there's like day ahead markets. The APS and SRP are talking about joining, uh, what's called SPP market EDM, uh, market plus, sorry. There's also the California EDM market. And so the utilities control which, which direction the, the power is being sent. I, I wish I could answer that outright and say it's absolutely going to Arizona. But I, I want to be transparent that it's the utilities' decisions.
Right. And, and, and I appreciate, I, I appreciate what you're saying. Commissioner Tohe, do you have any follow-up to your question, this answer? Do you, do you have anything further?
And no, I don't. I think that it's really kind of hard to, to support anything that doesn't benefit our local households, our local people, our local businesses. I don't know what the history of the, of the just completed project is bringing in. Um, where that energy is going. Um, so it's really hard for me to support something that I don't know where it's going to benefit our local people. Um, e- energy wise. I understand about jobs. I understand about that, but I'm, I'm just concerned about the rest of it. Thank you.
Um, Commissioner Tohe, just to address the question about, about BREC. Those, um, I do know for a fact that that project is contracted, uh, with, with SRP. Um, and sleeved to a, a data center facility local to, to Arizona. Um, and I'd, I'd also note that while, um, you know, from an accounting perspective, um, you know, with these different markets and how they quote unquote move power. That's really more of like an a- accounting element, but the electrons themselves are that's, that's a little bit of a, a different. The electrons are still in the same area.
Okay, I think we'll leave that. I think we'll leave that answer there. Um, because I don't see Commissioner Tohe unmuting to ask for further clarification on that. So thank you, Ms. Nguyen. Commissioner Best.
Thank you. Um, yeah, these are good questions. I I do not want to industrialize northern Arizona. I've been involved now in five projects. Here in Chevlon Butte. Babett Ranches Energy Center and then the Babett Solar. And this one. And I think we've done a pretty good job. You know, you can find, if, if you're driving to the Grand Canyon and you look hard enough, you can find Perrin's. You can see towers out there. Chevlon Butte, you have to drive south of Winslow, which very few people do. As I said before, the photo Sims for Babett Ranches Energy Center Towers, uh, I think when, when we all got out of the car out on one eighty a few weeks ago, we all said, hey, that's a lot more wind tower than I thought I'd see from those photo Sims. But there they are. I, uh, don't quite know where I saw it, but I think somewhere in the four hundred pages, it said this is probably the last project that the Babett Ranches is going to be looking for. Um, my take on it is that, um, if BRAC weren't there already. It would be a harder call. I think headed, heading east is not going to increase the visual impact by any significant amount. It's thirteen miles from eighty-nine. Not going to be very visible there. You know, th- there's already visible towers there, and I don't think we're going to increase the visual impact much with this project. It is a sacrifice to be doing this out in our natural area. But, uh, if, if, if we and everybody else around the world doesn't make this sacrifice. The projections of grow global warming are not pretty. So, um, to me, it's worth it. I, I don't think this increment is going to make much difference. If we didn't already have that group of towers with BRAC there, it would, might be a harder decision. But I think this next step is not going to make much difference. It's going to produce a lot of power. And, uh, a- as a final chapter on Babett Ranches, you know, theoretically from what they say. I can make the findings. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Best. Um, Commissioner Walsh, do you have anything further that you would like to add to the, uh, discussion?
Um, nothing further. I just really appreciate the thought that has gone into your concerns. I do prefer wind energy to, uh, solar panels. And I, I am with Commissioner Best in hoping that we come up with some better solutions in the future and we can take these down, but I can make the findings. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Walsh. Um, all right, this is Chair Ontavaris, and I'm going to go back through my notes here. Um, I appreciate the discussion and the feedback that, that I've received from my fellow commissioners. That's very valuable to me. So it's making me do a bit of a, I don't know what, if you want to call it a gut check. So, um, give me a moment. Okay, um, a couple of things that were brought up right now when we went back through this round, if you will. Of discussion. I know that it was brought up that hey, BREC is already there. I, it also, I just want to say right now that I appreciate all of this discussion. And all of the, the, the varying views that are coming into it. On, and I'm not surprised that we're ending up at different places. That said, uh, I know that it, it was talked about. Okay, BREC is already there. I agree with that. BREC is already there. And I'm, I'm going to go back. I, I wasn't necessarily going to bring this up because it is already there. The horse has left the barn, the ship has sailed, the genie is out of the bottle. Okay, it's there. But I do want to say that if I would have seen the true visual simulations to have known what it was going to look like when it was built. I can almost assure you that I would not have approved it. I can almost assure you of that. Now, it's hard to go back and, and say that, but I know that when I was on one eighty, when we did that, that campground site visit. I was like, whoa. I did not visualize that. And we know for a fact now that the visual Sims that the commission was provided were not accurate. We're, I'm, I'm not beating anyone up. I'm not rehashing anything here, but the reason we know that that's a fact is because when we did the site visit, um, for this project on August eighth. We held the Sims that were provided to the commission for approval of BREC when we were standing at one of the key um, observation points, and we looked at what the Sims showed it was going to be. And then we looked at what it really was. And so I can almost undoubtedly say that if I knew what it was really going to look like, I don't think I would have approved even BREC. The solar one was, it was, it was, I, I approved it. Like I said, this is the fifth project and I have voted to approve four out of the five. I will also say that it is because of the location of where this is. What I mean by that is if we were talking about a clustered development where the Chevlon Butte wind towers are. I don't think I would be having this discussion because it wouldn't, it wouldn't have the impact. But this is on the way to the Grand Canyon. It's going to be seen from spots, from, it's going to be visual. And I will agree. Um, I heard, I did hear Commissioner Ruggles comments that you know, you're going to have to look hard for it, but even the Department of Interior said there's going to be visual impacts from this development. So I, I don't think that we could, that we can say there's not going to be visual impacts. And maybe maybe where this conversation is at is, is that we each commissioner has to evaluate and assess the values on, on their own. I'm not even really trying to convince anyone here because I thoroughly, I have thoroughly evaluated this. And it goes back to, I'm, I'm going back and looking at my notes and for me. The value of protecting the natural environment, the val- wildlife in the view sheds. That outweighs the benefit of this development at this place. It's kind of like we've said it before, great plan. Like I, I have not argued about, about how great this application was. Great, it's great. But in my opinion, it's a great plan. It's in the wrong place. It's on the way to the Grand Canyon, one of seven, seven natural wonders in, not the county. Not the state, not the nation, but the entire world. And I think that there are some places that should just be off limits for this, and this is one of them for me. And so as much as I respect and appreciate all of the other comments that have been given by my fellow commissioners and I truly do respect those. There hasn't been anything said that has made me or will make me change my mind on this. This is a land use decision. This is not about whether we want renewable ener- if we like renewable energy, if we don't, it's not about that. It is a land use decision. And that is where I have really, really narrowed my analysis. And like I said, I realize that I may stand alone this evening in my decision. But alone I will stand because it is the only decision. that I, that I will sleep well over tonight. So with that, we're going to have to come to a vote on this. I know that I've stated very, I know I've stated where I'm at. I believe that Commissioner Ruggles and Best and Walsh have, I'm going to go back to Vice Chair Burton and that, and back to Commissioner Tohe and ask for you guys for continued thoughts on this.
I'm almost thinking in my, in my head because we have an even number of people here, and I have a sneaking suspicion this is going to be a deadlock. Honestly, for me, if this were a solar project, it wouldn't even make question. Because that's low to the ground. It doesn't have the same negative impact on birds, bats, critters that fly. The critters on the ground can maneuver around them. It, for me, it is the, the sheer monstrosities that are going to be added in here. I'm trying to gather my thoughts, so give me a minute.
No, you, you can take your time, Vice Chair Burton. Like, this is, this is a big decision that this commission is making this evening, and it will affect generations ahead of us. This is not a requesting the use of an RV as a permanent residence. This is, this is far bigger than that.
I am just back and forth and back and forth and back and forth in my head. And it can't be undone. I'm, I'm leaning towards no. I think that's where I'm probably going to stay.
Okay, Commissioner Tohe. I'm sorry, did I cut you off, Vice Chair Burton?
No, no, you're fine. Move on to the next.
Okay, Commissioner Tohe.
Can I wait until after Commissioner Best says what he needs to say?
The reason I came to you next was because Commissioner Ruggles, Commissioner Best, and Commissioner Walsh have already stated everything they said they needed to state. Now, if you, if you have discussion that you want, that if Commissioner Best said something that you want to talk to him about, now's the time to do it. You can, you can talk to any commissioner. Like, this, this is commission discussion. This is our time. And we can take as long as we want.
Well, I know, I, I'm just kind of looking at this from, from a different cultural perspective. I know that, you know, the Grand Canyon holds such a, such a, such a place in indigenous nations, and I wish I would have learned more about some of the things that individuals have said around Grand Canyon and this project. I know that that place is, is very important to a lot of indigenous nations in the area. And I, I don't know, you know, what kind of really, if there were any more efforts made regarding that, but I also am very concerned about our earth and how that, how that she needs some help in, in providing energy that will help reduce a lot of the emissions that are happening right now. I'm struggling with that, but I also am struggling with trying to make sure that if we're going to, if we're going to put these types of farms and, and, and whatnot in the areas that are meaningful to us, our local people should have a definite slice of that. So I know of solar farms that have been done here in Arizona, and the energy goes to California. And that I just totally disagree with. So I think that's where I'm not, I'm really, I really hope that somehow I have to just try to put my, put, put, put the trust in people that they will fight for the use of some of this energy for our local residents. So I think I'm, I'm saying that I'm, I'm kind of on the, on the side of Mother Earth and that hopefully this energy will help, especially in our area where we're trying to make sure that we're, we're keeping our air clean, we're want to reach reducing emissions by a certain year, those kinds of things, and so I'm sort of leaning that way that I'm, though I just, I, I struggle with the part again with not knowing how much of it will be ours here in our area. So based on that, I think-
Let me, let me go. Why don't you, like, collect some thoughts? Because this is difficult. I, I have, I'm, I'm, I've struggled with it. Commissioner Best has his hand raised. Let me go to him and get his, get some discussion from him, and then I will come right back to you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Best, if you could go ahead, please.
Yes, I, I worked on creating the Renewable Energy Ordinance on that committee. And really, the whole point of it, someone, I think maybe Commissioner Burton says you can't go back. The whole point of it is that we can go back. That's why I'm so adamant about the plant community. The whole point of the 400 pages is that when this is over, when there's some other form of energy, and I'll, I'll throw an aside at you. Write down quays, Q U A I S E, quays energy, Q U A I S E. When I say that there could be alternative forms of energy, that, that's a geothermal one that I've been reading about a lot lately. There are other possibilities, but we need action now because global warming is reaching tipping points that, you know, in 35 years, not going to make any difference if we don't handle things now. But the whole idea of the Rio is to do this kind of a project and then put it to bed. Another, and, and it's possible if the county steps up on its knowledge and enforcement, which I think we should bring up at a discussion meeting. And also if the applicant really puts the values in the Rio and in its application into a, a culture that really is serious about what it's doing, really understands those values and moves forward, forward to them. And that's tough because a lot of the world is based on the dollar. But I think what they've put together gives us a possibility that, that this vision of, of having this for 35 years, having it go away and having the plants and wildlife recover, it's possible. I, I think that's probably, another, another aspect of it is that Babbitt Ranches has a culture of keeping this, the, the Babbitt Ranches as open space. And this is helping. And yeah, it's kind of industrialized open space. I get it. It's painful, but it's, it's a little painful for me, too. But in the sort of generational, medium generational run, two generations, if this keeps them from, you know, developing a, a huge resort at Cameron or, or, you know, selling off lots, if it keeps that land intact as, as an ecology, that's another big advantage of this. And so yeah, it's, it's a little painful to drive out 180 and see those towers. We should have kept them back a few more miles. But now we know, and, but they're already there. And again, I, I think what we're going to put in is this next incremental step, not going to make that much difference, but it is going to make a difference in the amount of energy. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Best. Like I said, I think it's a great project. You have an excellent landowner. There's a lot of good. But it just goes back to, I, I just, I, I mean, I'm really checking myself on this, really, really checking myself because like I said, I've approved four. But where it's at and what it's going to do to the landscape in this area. I just keep checking myself. I, I can't. So Commissioner Best, your hand is still raised, or did you just forget to put it down?
I would never forget to put my hand down. You know that.
Yeah, you would.
I, I wanted to speak to the issue of where electrons go. Right now, my understanding is state law does not allow you to determine where electrons go. These various companies, APS and Tucson Electric Power, they have monopolies. SRP. There is a movement afoot to have community, I forget what the name is, but it's basically a community electricity where a community such as the Greater Flagstaff area could organize and put out for bid, electric, you know, electric service out for bids and, and see if they could get a cheaper price than APS is supplying with us now. It's happening around the country in various places. It is a possibility. But right now, I believe that state law endorses these monopolies, and so we can't do what has been asked of, of having the actual electrons arrive at our door. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Best. And like I said, this is a land use decision. And it's hard to trade. It's a tough trade-off. So with that, Commissioner Tohe, I'm going to come back to you now and take your time with your thoughts and your decision. I, I, I will say that you are muted.
Yeah, I wasn't ready to unmute.
Okay, you're fine. No, you're, you're fine.
I would, if we can, I would like to, I will say I, I make the findings, but I would like to add some sort of, if we can, make some sort of monitoring situations around what we're concerned about, at, at least for me, around what happens to the animals. And then, because not every place is, is the same and around the, the, our plant relatives. So I don't know if that's possible, but I would like to at least somehow protect them to have some sort of enforcement or monitor, monitoring around that. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Tohe, if we go to, I'm going to direct you to the staff report. And I'm going to ask you to look at page trying to find where the conditions are written.
Madam Chair, page 20.
Thank you. Yep, thank you, Mr. Short. Commissioner Tohe, if you could go to page 20 of the staff report. You know, you're right. Yeah, hold on. I got a lot of papers on my desk right now.
Yeah, I had the, I had it open, but then I, I turned it off.
Okay. That's where the recommended conditions of approval are. And there are going to be modifications to conditions four, five, and six. There are seven conditions there. And so I would ask you what, if you could be specific. Commissioner Tohe, in your request.
Can you tell me what page is, it is again, 20?
Yes, it's on, now, this is specifically in the staff report. It's page 20 of 21. So it's the, it's the next to the last page in the staff report.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate that. I'm just trying to scroll through my, my stuff.
If you're scrolling through the PDF, it's like page 38 or 39.
Yeah, it's on, it's on our, it's on share, so.
So Madam Chair and Commissioner Tohe, this is just with staff. So this is, this is page 20 of 21 of the staff report, and then it's page 38 of the PDF packet. So these are the seven conditions. Of course, as Bob Short pointed out in his presentation, there's fewer conditions required now in the, in the renewable energy projects because of the Rio, the Renewable Energy Ordinance section of our zoning ordinance that does have, that does have reporting requirements, particularly when it comes to wildlife. So certainly, our staff can answer any questions on what, what are those requirements out of, out of the ordinance? And then the applicant, of course, could speak to their, their, their large application and what, what they're committing to in their application in the way of reporting requirements when it comes to wildlife and, and plant protection.
Okay, so on this one, it says that that may deviate from site plan. I guess for me, I would want to know, like, specifics. Are they, I, I didn't read everything in the 400 pages. So I guess my, my question would be, can, is there something specific that says? So I guess my question would be, can, is there something specific that says that monitoring or some sort of checkup can be done, like in a time, like maybe annually? Or is that something that is not within our scope to ask for?
I'm going to let, Mr. Short, I'm going to let you answer that question. Actually, let me, let me back up a little bit here. Commissioner Tohe, what is, what is the specific thing that you are looking for? And then let's see if it is addressed in one of these seven conditions as written. We may not need to add or modify anything further.
Can I speak up for a second?
Madam Chair, oh, is that Jessica? Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I can talk a little bit about the wildlife monitoring and reporting requirements. The applicants are stating that they will do two years of really comprehensive consultant-led post-construction bird and bat mortality surveys at the site. And then for the life of the project, they will do annual more, not quite as rigorous, but more casual bird and bat carcass searches at each turbine. And the applicant can correct me if I'm wrong on the details of that. And they will be submitting annual reports on those.
Jessica, I think you nailed it from the applicant perspective. That is correct.
So, so is this going to be like a self-check? Is there anybody from some department that's going to be with them?
So for the first two years, it's consultant-led, so it would be consultants doing the work. So biologists that they hire, that would be for the first two years. So it is them, it is the applicant that is hiring the the biologist. But then following those first two years, it would be self-reporting by staff that are on site.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Tohe, was there, was there another specific that you, that you were looking at?
Not really. I think I would, I think my feeling was that that it would be a little bit stronger than self-check. Especially, yeah, that's the only thing that I, that I would that I would like to buff up if we can, but if we can't, we can't.
Well, that would be, that would be a matter of, I mean, I guess that we could. It would be a matter of going back to the commissioners and asking them if they would like to add that in. Now, Commissioner Best, I did see your, oh, your hand was raised, but now it's down.
I'll raise it again. You know, I think if you read through, so one of the things that we've tried to do lately is not have conditions that are duplicated in the zoning code. And so we could really take out number three. Because it's in, it's in the code and it's in the applicant's presentation. There's a lot of there's, there's quite a bit. It's 400 pages. There's a great deal of material in there supporting wildlife and plants. I couldn't have done it better myself. It's not necessarily in the conditions. We could add a condition, I suppose. But it's maybe the applicant could direct us to some areas that will answer the questions that Commissioner Tohe is asking here, but I think it's, I think it's in what they've committed to do. And so again, there are two questions in my mind. Number one, the actual culture of the applicant, what they'll really do. And number two, is the county staff robust enough to make sure that they do what they're supposed to do? And those are honest questions. Why didn't, why didn't an inspector call up the county and say, hey, there's two miles of Russian thistle along the road out here. That's not right. Let's get somebody on it. As soon as staff knew about it, they immediately did something and got a response. But they got to be out looking. And do we really have the staff for that? That is the question in my mind. And assuming that this passes, that's the question I'll be asking. Heck, I'll drive out there myself. So, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Best. Commissioner Tohe, I do understand, because this is the first project that is coming in under the Renewable Energy Ordinance. It comes in with a very strict set of guidelines and conditions. And I think that the concerns that you have, I honestly think that they are met in the conditions that are listed here. But further, they are required as a result of the Renewable Energy Ordinance itself. So I don't know if that helps at all, but I, I think that you're, I'd be willing to bet that the concerns that you have are in fact addressed in the conditions and most certainly in the ordinance. So I don't, I don't necessarily feel that it would be important to add anything else in here because I believe it's already there. I believe I've heard what your concerns are. And I think I can say with a high degree of certainty that they are being met in what is already here. Now, I am going to ask, I do see Ms. Simmons' hand raised. Would you like to add something?
Yes, thank you, Chair Antovereus. I just thought of another thing that maybe might be helpful for people to know is that the applicant will be writing up a bird and bat conservation strategy. That is a really detailed report on exactly all the things they're going to do to protect birds and bats at the project. And that has not been finalized yet, and that is something that will be coming up, but will be approved before operations begin. So if there are more very specific concerns that, that people feel have not been addressed, that there's still another step remaining that could sorry, possibly address those.
Okay, and, okay, do you have anything further, Ms. Simmons? Because I'm going to go to Ms. Schwinn, and then we're going to come back and we're going to make a motion and we're going to go from there.
No, thank you, Chair Antovereus.
Okay, Ms. Schwinn, final thoughts.
Thank you. Appreciate you giving me the opportunity just to chime in on this topic. To Jessica's point, we will have that BBCS done. And our intent actually is to have it done, that's, I believe, in this, in these conditions, is to have it done before the building permit is issued rather than before operations. We want to make sure that we've addressed the county's needs, we've met with, that we, you know, also coordinated with Arizona Game and Fish and US Fish and Wildlife per Section 3.19E ahead of even putting any infrastructure in the ground. We just think that that's best practice. RWE does tend to be a little bit more conservative than some others in the industry from that perspective. And we want to make sure that we get our due diligence done right upfront before we even start construction. And then through operations, we do have mitigation requirements per Section 3.19F. And we will be continuing to work with Arizona Game and Fish and US Fish and Wildlife. And of course, Jessica and Wildlife Planning for the county. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Schwinn. Mr. Short, would you please put up the modifications that you spoke about in your staff report? Okay, I want all of the commissioners to look at these. And if there is anything that causes a commissioner angst, raise your hand. Otherwise, these will become conditions four, five, and six. Okay, and I am not seeing any hands raised. Yes, I am. Vice Chair Burton?
I'm not sure I'm super thrilled with the, I mean, I trust the Community Development Director implicitly, but I'm not sure that I'm super comfortable with it allowing to exceed 640 feet possibly in the future. If that makes sense.
Yeah, it does make sense. So what would, what language do you feel would be appropriate here?
I honestly don't know because I don't that's such an abstract possibility. Like, it's such, it's such in the abstract that I wouldn't even know how to reframe it.
I see Commissioner Ruggles' hand raised, and I bet he's going to have, bet he's going to have some thoughts. Go ahead, Commissioner Ruggles. Commissioner Ruggles, you're muted.
Thank you for your confidence there. My question would be that if this is a sticking point, perhaps the statement that increase in the height would have to be a modification to the CUP if supposedly we pass it. We have done that before. And I can see the concern here, of course, because you know, considering everything's been discussed tonight, stating that this would have to be done as a modified condition to the CUP. We've done stuff like that before, where very simply an applicant has come forward sometime down the road and asked for a modified CUP. And it can be just something very simple, such as a statement that, yeah, we have to evaluate it. And if you want to go to 670 feet for one reason or the other, you're going to have to come to the commission and say, here are all the reasons for that. And here's why we want to do this. As for instance, just a thought on this. So I think I've had enough to say at this point.
Okay, Mr. Short, I see your hand raised.
Yes, Madam Chair. And the reason for this addition to the condition is that we don't really, and I explained this when I was doing my presentation, but we don't really know what, you know, what types of turbines might come out. There might be one that's 20 feet taller, you know, and it might be a much better fit for the applicant. And the applicant has her hand raised as well, so she could speak to this. If you actually have a modification, the modification's really, it is just, just a new CUP. So it has to go through the same process without really adding anything to the condition. So it is really just a, I mean, it's a relatively simple way to do it, but it is a new CUP application to do a modification. And I would look forward to Ms. Schwinn's comments on this as well.
Yeah, Ms. Schwinn, would you please chime in here?
Absolutely. I think, you know, RWE, we can, we can be flexible here. Happy, happy for it to be a modification. I think to Bob's point, the reason that, the language of, you know, if determined increased height will not create significant visual impact or wildlife impacts. The reason we would look to a bigger machine is because it would also come with being a larger megawatt size, which would mean less machines. So there's, there is an advantage to that. At the same time, I think we can be comfortable with the 640 feet and a modification. You know, we absolutely can work, work with you guys on this.
So, so Ms. Schwinn, just to, so I understand, just 640 feet, period? Well, 640 feet to the tip of the blade when in a vertical position, period? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, we would, we would like that modification piece in there just because that, I think it would also benefit, I think it would be a win-win.
Okay, so then it would say something to the effect that if the height needs to go beyond that, you would, the applicant would have to come back before the commission. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I think that's, that's 100% within reasonable.
Okay, Mr. Short, would you please? Would you please put that verbiage in there?
And Madam Chair, again, with or without that verbiage, I can put it in there, of course. But it really requires a modification either way. Because this is a conditional use permit. They would have to come back with another application for a conditional use permit to do the modification. So that's a given in either case.
Well, doesn't it say that you, that the Community Development Director and the wildlife, hold on, or a height approved by the Community Development Director and the Wildlife Planner? So they don't need to come back before the commission?
No, in this case, they don't need to come back before the commission, the way it's written now. But if you, if you include the need for a modification to the CUP, then that would come back to the commission, if I'm hearing.
Right, but it would be specific to condition number four. It wouldn't be a whole new CUP.
That's, with, a modification is basically a whole new CUP. So you could modify anything in here without even having that language here. It's just, it's a given that if you have a modification to a CUP, you apply for a new CUP and you come back to the commission with a new CUP.
That's semantics. I think we're kind of missing each other in this, just with staff. We're missing each other in, in. So by eliminating the underlying portion, and they are just limited to 384 feet and eliminating the underlying portion about, or a height approved by the Community Development Director, they're limited to that. If they want to change that, Bob is saying it's a new CUP. We're saying it has to come back to the commission. It's, yes, it would have to come back to the commission in hearing to, to increase that height. So the, saying the term a new CUP, I realize is confusing. It's coming back to the commission with a, with an application, another public hearing application to modify what they, what they already had, the limits of what was already approved.
Right. And that's, that's how I understood it. And I do agree. I think, I think the meaning was getting lost in the semantics. So so I'm going to ask the applicant, Ms. Schwinn, look at what's being proposed there. Do you agree with that? We're specifying the condition for.
Yep.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Ruggles, your hand is raised.
Yeah, just one quick comment. That's exactly what I was intending to get the discussion headed to. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. Okay. So your hand is still raised, Commissioner Ruggles, but I'm thinking you just didn't put it down.
You are correct.
Okay, all right. So, we now have let's see, the number of permanent met towers. Okay, so we've hit number four. We're on number five. let's see, the number of permanent Met Towers. Okay, so we've hit number four, we're on number five.
So Madam Chair, if you, if you are removing that, that language from condition four, you probably should move it from condition five as well, which is just an add-on to begin with.
Yeah, I agree. And I'm going to ask Ms. Schwinn, look at condition number five, please, and I want to know if you look at the modification, we're simply doing the same thing that we did to four? Do you agree with that?
I'm just double checking really quickly to make sure. The, the tricky thing with the hub heights is that they don't necessarily correlate to the tip heights. So sometimes we have machines where the hub height is a little bit taller, even though the tip height is lower. I'm just.
Item number five is specific to the Met Towers. We probably got confusing with using the term hub height when we're talking about the Met Towers. We understand the height of the Met Tower is, is, is necessary to be at the same height of the hub height of the planned, of the planned turbine. So I, I think that number five got confusing on having hub height in the, in the condition, when the condition is relative, is, is regulating the Met Tower height.
So Madam Chair, this, yeah, this referred to the highest potential hub height of any of the turbines that the applicant had proposed. So it prefers this number right here, because even with a, with a larger turbine, it's, it has a smaller hub height. So that's, that's where the 384 came from.
Okay, so it is the maximum hub height, so no matter what it is, it would.
Of any of these machines that they're, that they're showing here so far.
Okay, so now go back to the conditions. And Met Tower should be limited to one. And the number of temporary should be limited to six. Okay, and, yep, strike that. What you have highlighted will be struck. Okay. I don't see any hands raised from the commissioners, Ms. Schwinn?
I, I think 384 will do the trick. I'm just.
I, I was going to suggest that we just kind of maybe tie it into number four with a statement that says, or as otherwise approved for, I don't know, something along the lines of whatever is approved for the height of the actual turbines. So that they're equal, I don't know.
Yeah, the hub height is 384. That's as high as it's going to be for any turbine.
Well, of the four that they, of the four that they proposed, but if they find a different one, this correlates back to number four. If they find one that's taller, that's not among the ones they proposed. So I think this needs to be tied into number four, that it goes with it. Like, if they come back for a modification to the 640 feet and we approve it, that number five just automatically like trails to follow that given height, if that makes sense.
Right, to the approved wind turbine height, to, or the approved wind turbine hub height, uh-huh.
But I, I think, Ms. Schwinn, does that, does that sound more along the lines of making sense for you guys?
Yes, it does.
However that needs to be worded, I don't know, but I, it's something about the, or an approved modification height to the actual turbines, or something along those lines. One just follows the other.
Okay, so the hub height for all Met Towers shall be limited to 384 feet or the height of the approved wind turbine. Or, yeah, or the hub height, okay, good.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Is everyone okay with that?
Yes, from the applicant. Thank you for your patience with us.
Okay. No, no, we, it's, this is important stuff. On, okay, and I'm not seeing any hands raised by the commissioners for any angst on number six. So with that, I will accept a motion in a second, please. And the motion needs to state with the modified conditions.
I'll go ahead and make a motion on this. I make a motion to approve CUP with the changes to conditions as stated for conditions four, five, and six.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Ruggles and a second by Commissioner Best for approval of CUP 24019 with modifications to conditions four, five, and six as stated. All in favor, please say aye. Vice Chair Burton?
Nay.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Tohe?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh?
Aye.
This is Chair Antovaros, and I vote nay. The motion passes four to two. And I do just want to state that we have an excellent applicant, we have an excellent landowner, excellent staff. I guess I just consider myself the Lorax of Usheds around the Grand Canyon, and it really came down to that one issue. So, um, thank you, commissioners. I respect all of the discussion opinions and that we've had here this evening. And with that, Ms. Schwinn, good luck on your baby. And with that, it is 9:15 PM. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Last item on the agenda, call to public for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission this evening for items not on the agenda? Okay, and seeing none, it is 9:15 PM and the meeting is adjourned. Good night, everyone. Thank you so much. Good night.